At six two.
I'm sorry. I'm just getting the zoom up still.
Okay, I don't have my little script for work sessions on the agenda. Okay, so no public comment will be taken and the council will take no formal action. Tonight's work session is on council compensation and it's going to be led by our assistants. Excuse me, our assistant city manager and finance director, Paul Downey. If it's, if it's okay with the council, I have the chair of the budget committee here who can provide additional comments or comment. And I would like to open the floor for him to be able to do that. Is there consensus from y'all if that's okay? Okay, cool. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to or to assistant city manager, Paul Downey and David.
All right, I'm going to move through this relatively quickly because we want to leave more time for you guys to have discussion than to hear me talk, so. I'm going to hope that you have read, have gone through the presentation. Purpose is to address city, the council objective 11 evaluate council accessibility and compensation options to inform the budget process. That's the main purpose and then there's ensuring compliance with ORS. Excellent, skip the agenda page. So background consensus to consider council compensation. Last year, the budget committee, the citizen members had two meetings. Two meetings, two meetings and they made a recommendation to the council. Council work sessions in May and June to consider the council, consider the council compensation recommendations. Some senses will reach should be a public process and how our overall consensus on what to do about council compensation was not reached at that time. Next page, current compensation. You can all see you get there's two, there's a stipend for the mayor, a different type of counselors, health insurance. And then internet and the tablet every three, advice, money towards advice every three years. Next page is shows you what, we looked at a lot of different cities to see what they do and you can look at it and quickly see that it's all over the place. For what they do for between stipends and medical insurance. There aren't, to all attendant for us grow over the only cities about our size that give medical insurance. Wilsonville, Wilsonville gives a fairly high, is much higher stipend for us for cities around our size. Most of the other cities around our size and that give less. You'll, and you'll see some larger cities like, like us, we go give mayor a stipend around 6,000, but no health insurance. Like I said, it's all over the board for what city councils do for compensation. Next slide. Right now, the current cost is about $146,000 annually. And the general fund, 125,000 for the health insurance benefits and 21,000 for the wage, for these wages and electronic stipend. The budget committee findings from last year with, when they made their recommendations is the current compensation structure lack, lacks transparency. As the public is unaware of the individual elections and their associated expenses. Current compensation is heavily weighted towards insurance benefits primarily benefiting retirees or self-employed individuals. Compensation is not always aligned with duties responsibilities. With potential discrepancies about to 30,000 if somebody doesn't take health insurance, council doesn't take health insurance and the council takes family health insurance. That's about a $30,000 difference right there. And council compensation needs to align more closely with city values, financial stewardship, equity, diversity and inclusion. That was the citizen members of the budget committee's findings last year. The recommendation was to retain the existing stipend differential between the mayor and council, create a new stipend category for council president. Change the health insurance premium, health insurance options to employee only. Retain the 95/5 split. Where the city pays 95 and the counselor pays five. And then allow additional insurance at members expense. So about 8,800 for an individual. If somebody wants to ensure a family or two party, then they could pay the differential. Recommended increasing the mayor's stipend to 12,000, council president's stipend to 9,500. Counselors to 8,000, no change to electronic stipend. Review every three years, mentor employee salary survey. Total expense for council or compensation, council or mayor compensation under this would decrease by $16,000. From 146 to 130,000 annually. And there will probably be less, less potential for it to increase faster in the future because you'd be tying most of it to the salary and not to the health insurance. Reasons proposed to be more transparent, more equitable, address primary equity and equity and compensation structure with health insurance. That way it's spread equal, the officials can have equal compensation. Has accessibility by enabling financial individuals to run for office who may not otherwise have the financial to do so. And put in line more closely with city values. Compensation implementation, there's many ways you can do it. You can, you could do it by administrative decision. It's not legislative. You can do it by resolution, not by ordinance. You could do a public hearing before if you wanted to. There's a couple of different options for doing, for how you can do it. You can do a delayed implementation at which the current councilor's compensation would not change until after the next, after their next election. Or you could do an immediate implementation, which, which is a, which is a more tricky process. Cause you, the counselors and the mayors cannot vote on their own compensation. So you have to split it up. The Barry Elsner has taken different cities through this process before that the immediate implementation is something you might want to do. And council rules, a majority of the counselors must be present to constitute a quorum. A majority of the quorum is required for any council decision. So council resolutions, other cities, Beaverton passed a resolution making compensation effective after each election cycle. Cornelius Hillsborough and Tiger passed resolutions making the compensation effective immediately. And we were unable to locate any cities that have preferred compensation to the voters unless it was required by the charter. Oh, discussion items. I'm going to turn it back over to the mayor, but here are some potential discussion items and.
Really quick before you turn over to us.
Yeah, I would just say that if you feel like this needs for the work, you can remand it back to the budget committee, but give us some guidelines for what areas you'd like to work on. Otherwise, I think there was a pretty clear consensus from the committee that this was the direction we'd like to go. We took no position on how and when the counselors may choose to do it, so it's up to you.
Great, thank you. Okay, so um, let's just go through the discussion items. Do we, I mean, is there discussion on? Let's go through the recommendation. Let's discuss that quickly. So this is the recommendations. Are there any questions, comments about this recommendation?
I have.
Okay, Councilor Martinez.
Okay, so one of my concerns is, well, I guess maybe I should just say question right now. Is the increase in wage for the council president? So I don't know what all was required of council, of councillor Gustafson when she was council president. I know that council president Rippey, or when he was council, on council and council president, he wasn't requested to do anything. So that's kind of what I'm looking for right there.
Yeah, so that's a new position that the budget subcommittee recommended. Is there any information, Chair Anderson, about what, how you?
Our perception was that the council president needed to make themselves available to do the job if the mayor couldn't be there for some reason. And typically when you put someone on call or standby, be given some consideration for that.
Well, and that, that makes sense. My other concern would be giving us such a large stipend, my concern would be people who want to run for positions on the council would potentially be doing it for money, even though that's not a great amount of money. For some people that is. And it should be, I mean, when I ran, I didn't know that there was any sort of compensation. So I did it because of my desire for my community. And I think that should be the driving force for anybody running for mayor or council.
Yeah, I mean, I, I hear you and I agree, but I think, you know, what, what I'm hearing from, I think what you're saying, you know, I think that's why most of us up here do the work we do. And I think that even with this, and I would say with this stipend, it's going to be the same thing. But what, what I'm hearing and, you know, and I, what I've heard even from the committee who looked at our boards and commissions and then the charter is that we don't have a lot of people wanting to do this work. Right? So like Hillsborough, Hillsborough State of the City, they said they were actually going to be offering their board and commission members stipends to be on board and commissions. And so I think that by, I, I, you know, I guess my view of it is you can't live off this wage. This isn't even a part-time salary. This is the idea of if you need childcare, if you need to take days off work, if you have to go or you feel inclined to go to fundraisers and the tickets are $250, like these are to help you negate the cost of serving. Like that's the way I would look at it and that I would explain it to the community is there is a cost. There's a cost financially we pay to doing this, whether it's going and buying donuts at Papa Floyd's, right? When you're doing the tour, like, thank you, I know you did that and you supported downtown business and you supported the police station. But I, I think that this wage or this stipend isn't something that's going to cause somebody to quit their job. You know what I mean? So that's, yeah, and I think, you know, in an ideal world, you know, I think that's what the founding fathers want is like, you know, this idea of civic leadership was do your day job, come up, do things for your city. But I think the time, there is a time commitment and some other expense.
So I, so I don't think, just my response to her real quick. No, I, nobody's going to quit their job for this, definitely not. This is an addition on top of that. So if I, if we go forward with this, then my thing is if we find that it's a problem, then it needs to be changed.
Councilor Schimmel.
I actually wanted to say something to affirm councillor Martinez's comment that, or just acknowledge that it's, it's on the list of things, but probably a rare, rare as a relevant reason that someone would do that. And then, and it, but it helps to recap some of the discussion from the previous council. And I, what I recall is that the counselors went to great pains to try to motivate people to that, that specific position. So it seems like this, this is an appropriate motivator. But it's not, I know just from people entering public service, that's not high on the list. But it's, it's noteworthy. It's just whether it's how relevant it is in terms of establishing that policy.
I, Councilor, Council President Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so I don't, like you said before, I think, I mean, I'm certain none of us run for these positions. You know, I didn't even know that there was a stipend or, or health insurance or anything like that, you know? And, and I think this would help in the future to motivate someone that would otherwise have to pay like for childcare while they come to the meetings. You know, that kind of thing. Or if you need to be, go to a gala to support, you know, a nonprofit, those tickets cost a lot of money. But you want to be out there, be out there with the community and participate in all these events. And, you know, a little bit of help, I think it's, it's definitely needed. But yeah, I mean, if it becomes a problem, I think we can revisit. But I don't think it will be an issue.
Any other questions? I haven't heard from councillor Falconer, Marshall or Gustafson. Councillor Gustafson.
I understand what, what you're saying. I think it's, it's really valid. I mean, it should be that we, we all volunteer for this. I think maybe this, this stipend was like for gas money or something like that back in the day. When it was first started, but um, it, it's really hard because, you know, not only did many of us not know that there was a compensation, because I didn't know either. But it's not just the council meetings, but we have, you know, other commitments that are there. So I, you know, I realize there's a, it's not just that. There's a lot of, of service that goes along with it. And so it's a sacrifice that, that we're doing. And so I, I think the, you know, the, the wage increase is, is appropriate. Cause it's, you know, it's, it's a part-time job at that point, just because of all the hours that we put in.
And, you know, I would put, push back that it's not actually an increase. It's actually a change in compensation and a decrease for the city's annual budget. And something that's more transparent for the whole community, right? And I, like, so it looks like an increase because our stipend's increasing, but you're shifting from an insurance-based compensation to a stipend.
Okay, so it, it just said increase on there. Is that, was I looking at the wrong page?
It says increasing the stipend, but then if you go to the bottom of the, it says total expense for council or compensation would decrease by 16,000.
Oh, got it.
So it's like a nuance in by, like, I also think that that optics is important, that it's also fiscally responsible.
The other change, remember, is the health insurance from down to one party. So if you have, if you have more, if you have two, the family, this change will also take you back to just the employee coverage.
Councillor Falconer.
I mean, I guess we haven't ruled, that's the one that I thought we might have a little bit more discussion. Because it, I don't, I haven't heard any comments on that part yet.
On what, the insurance?
On the insurance. You were going to, okay, I, I guess maybe just focusing on, on what we've already discussed. I, on the other slide about compensation, I, I, I agree with the mayor, I agree with councillor Gustafson. I think we, I think, I agree. It's not just, it's not even really paying for your time because that, that would be like not even a dollar an hour. So that's, it's really just about the additional sacrifices, I hate to call them sacrifices, the additional commitments that we all make in the community. And making those things more accessible to us because they probably wouldn't be. I mean, we, we, many of us probably couldn't afford to do.
Councillor Schimmel.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first I want to make an acknowledgement to Mr. Anderson as the, the chair of the budget committee. I, I want to give you a lot of credit, you and the committee, the subcommittee who put this together and, and the pains he went through to, to thoughtfully come up with this proposal. Thank you for enduring what was a difficult deliberation and, and sticking with the process and being here. I'm sorry that we lost a couple of budget committee members, but I want to thank you for that, that effort. I'm, I'm generally supportive of, of the proposal presented to us. The, the two things that I would, I want to comment publicly, one is medical coverage is absolutely compensation. It absolutely is in every industry, it's compensation. That was in terms of a recap of the previous deliberation that was rejected or not accepted, but, but that is the industry standard. And that's an important consideration when we're talking about increasing stipends that we're, we're, we're actually transferring the value of the medical coverage to the site stipend for people who don't need the coverage. I'm trying to remember the, the second point there, might have to come back to me. But I think that, that's, that in particular, I think is important to reconciling what it means to, to increase from one and transfer from another type of compensation.
Okay, are there comments or, I mean, this is a change to the health insurance option. And so is there any deliberation about that, any comments? It is all part, I agree, it's all part of the compensation package, but this is a big change for this council in terms of historic context, so. Okay, I don't see any comments. What is our other discussion items? Sorry, can we go back to?
Uh, process.
No, you had it.
You had it at the end.
You had it, you had it and Jesse gave you bad directions. It's okay.
One more.
One more, please. No to, like the end, discussion items. Okay, so.
Do not.
Okay, so now we need, so we, do we accept, is there consensus to accept the budget committee's recommendation? I'm seeing one head nod, two, three, four, five. Councillors Marshall and Martinez? There's, there's, yeah, five now, so.
You've got a majority right now.
It's okay to say no.
Yeah, right now.
Yes.
I mean, I, I understand changes and that's fine. So I, you know, I'm not going to be a top, certainly not.
And there is still an option if a councillor wants to, if, I mean, we did not discuss the health insurance, but if a councillor or a mayor or council president wants to purchase health insurance for their family, there's through the city, that's still an option, correct?
They can purchase a two-party family, they just.
I just want to make sure that. Can we go back? Yes, councillor Schimmel remembered his other point. Nope.
Well, I thought maybe we're at the end of the.
The approval process. We have to go through the approval process.
Well, I guess one clarification just from conversation with, with Jesse was around. It was a either or stipend or medical coverage, not vote.
For the previous one, yes. For the, for, yeah. No, the pre, what do you, what can you ask? Can you restate your question?
That, the proposal, the, the recommendation is that a councillor can choose the medical coverage or the stipend.
No, the recommendation from the budget committee is that there is a stipend of, I don't remember what value. And then there is health insurance for the individual councillor. Then the councillor can still get their stipend and then choose to either use that stipend or something else to purchase health insurance for someone else or does not need to. What you get in the compensation package as a councillor is a stipend and individual health insurance. With, yeah, you get, that's what you get.
What the budget committee is trying to do is keep it cost neutral as they could.
Yeah, to be really transparent, but then everyone's getting the same thing, right? It's a very transparent public. You don't think.
Yeah. But yeah, sort of, I mean, I, I know, let's say half of us have a, have a more favorable medical coverage elsewhere.
Yeah.
But your explanation of that, that stipend can go to backfill the medical coverage that they lost. For their family.
Right now, that could be the case too. And so you have some councillors not getting any source stipend because they're using their employer-based insurance. Or I guess they're getting the 2,000, I don't know, wait, 2,100, it doesn't matter. We're getting like back, we're going backwards and we should not go backwards. We have five minutes. Okay, let's go through the approval process. Okay, so option one is to delay implementation, increase takes effect at the end of each term. So all councillors may vote, there's no actual conflict of interest, if a councillor spouts candidacy, they may declare a potential conflict. Option two is immediate implementation. Okay, so which option? Do we want to just, I'm going to say like, I, I'm going to say my opinion about the options. I see both sides of it, so it's like really tricky for me. I always do pros and cons. And so the idea like that, you know, I think drawing to what councillor Martinez said and what some of us had said, like, we signed up to do the job under the situation we were given at that time. And so in that case, like with that argument, then waiting till after the term is like an understandable option. But I'm actually leaning the other way because I also out of, like, I don't think it's fair necessarily, like, we just had an election. And so half of us, like, if we do option one, the delayed implementation, like it would take, you know, four years, like two, like half of us would be getting a different stipend or compensation in a year and a half and the other half wouldn't get it for, and I don't think that's fair. I think that everybody should get the same stipend at the same time. And so that's why I would, like, I would, my position is probably more towards option two. But I'm happy to hear what other people say. Councillor Gustafson.
So when I first looked at it, I saw number two and I laughed on the inside because that's really crazy, but I agree with you. After looking at it, I'm like, well, yeah, I totally agree for the same reasons.
Councillor Martinez.
So I, I don't necessarily agree with starting it at the end of each term, but how about at the end of the year? I mean, at the beginning of the year with the new cycle, does that make sense?
And like the fiscal year?
Yes. Well, not fiscal necessarily, but when we sign up for medical at the beginning of the year or end of the year, then it changes at that point.
Let's go, let's go, Paul, and then go you. Yeah. Paul, what do you, what is your plan of attack or what do you think about this stuff?
I would, I mean, I'm not going to tell, I mean, if you do every year, it's going to get a bit confusing because you're going to have, are you going to look at changing your compensation every year?
No, 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 we are not understanding. One, how, yes, Jesse.
So if you, if you want to do it at the end of the year, you can, it would still be option two. Option one is pertaining to the ethics of it and same with option two. And so it's either at the end of the term, if you want to do it at the end of the year, you can, you can delay the implementation. However, that's still option two. That's still an administrative resolution.
Potentially, could this basically a hybrid of both stays until the end of this, the three people that are left on this until then are in a term? And then everybody agrees that going forward after that, this term for the people to have the, like a year and a half after that leaves, then it, everybody agrees that it starts forward at that point. Cause then you're basically taking care of the three councillors that were just voted in recently.
Councillor, wait, we cut councillor Schimmel off a couple of times ago, so.
Well, I'm, I'm on board with option two. The only caveat is along the lines of what councillor Martinez was saying about an annual cycle, but it's really the medical coverage cycle. You, there's a, there's a, there's an app, a enrollment period that opens and closes. And I don't know who on the council has family on coverage that they're counting on through the current enrollment period. That's, that's the only caveat. If, if, if anyone has a family that's currently enrolled, I think we should honor that through the current enrollment period.
You can, on that, but change, change the rest, but just.
Yeah, because is that, I was going to ask, have we, has the city paid, yeah, can you speak to that, Paul?
You could elect to make this change in compensation, say effective January 1 of 2026, which would get everybody and keep it as it currently is and then get it. Then when you went to the January 1st, you would, if you wanted to go to this newer assist employee only coverage and that, that would be the only election council would be allowed to make. CIS doesn't care if we make a change in the middle of the year because it's, it's a qualifying, it would be a qualifying event because you no longer, if you take more than employee insurance, you're no longer eligible for it. And if you have an employer, you can go back to your other employer, you don't take coverage and you can make, change that coverage, so.
Well, can I ask a question? Have we already paid, has the city already paid for the insurance for this year?
No, we pay it by the month.
You pay it by the month?
I pay monthly.
I guess if it's not a.
So when, when you were like planning this out, like what was the, I do, I mean, just as on a city staff level, like when were you thinking of rolling this out or like making this, the change, making the switch?
I have it current, we have it currently budgeted how it's currently occurring. Cause we.
Have it currently budgeted for what?
We're currently budgeting the 146, which is, which is the current method of the stipend plus the smaller stipends plus the coverage at the councillor's choice. We will budget it that way until the council wants to make a change because we don't, I'm not going to budget for a lower amount. The council is not going to make a change. I need to know about the change before I change the budget.
I guess my, I guess my question is, would people lose their health insurance if we pass this and it started sooner? Like would they, they wouldn't change, we wouldn't change our health insurance.
If you start, let's say you started at July 1st.
Yeah.
For example.
With the fiscal budget.
Anybody that's above family coverage, anybody that's above single coverage would lose that and they would go to single coverage on July 1st.
So should we then, so I, I mean, is there?
I do have a question.
Yeah, councillor president.
Paul, when, for option two, what did you have in mind when you say immediate implementation? Did you have a date, a specific date? Did you have a date, a specific date in mind, a specific time?
The council can direct us to what date they want to put on. I mean, it could be immediately, it could be, you know, the end of this year, whatever, whatever date the council decides on, on how they want to implement it, so.
I would, I also support option two. Um, I'm not in favor of, uh, January 1st, 2026.
You are in favor of that?
Being, I'm not.
Not.
I'm not. Um, so, you know, July 1st, that, that would be what I can compromise to.
Well, I, I think there, what I'm hearing from some people, and I would agree, is that if you've signed up for a, like, if you sign up for family health insurance and, like, because the way it works with open enrollment, if the city changes at July 1st and your other employer doesn't open up their enrollment, then you're gonna have a lapse in healthcare. You see what I'm saying? Like, because there's only certain windows.
We'd have a qualifying event with your other employer. If you were, if you say you didn't take coverage with your other employer because you took it here and the, we changed the insurance, that would be a qualifying event for you.
It is a qualifying event?
As your dependent.
Because you've lost cover. If you've had more employee coverage here, you've then lost.
Okay, we need to discuss as a council, I mean, I'm just gonna give us like kind of a two-minute. I mean, so there's, I'm hearing there's consensus to go with option two, but the timeline of when we do it, we are not in consensus yet. So I've heard Jan, January or December 31st of 2025, right? That's switch over or July?
Councillor. I would, yeah, I would propose, uh, July 1 to coincide with our fiscal year. The caveat being, and, and we don't know, I don't know if the situation exists that somebody has family coverage. If that doesn't exist, then it's a mute point. If it exists, I, I would want to honor that through the enrollment period, which is, would be the end of this year. But that, that I'm talking, I'm still suggesting we implement it. But if, if there's that family coverage honoring that through the, which would be the end of the, the, the year. But then that's a financial analysis, is that still under budget if we did that?
If you change the stipend up to the higher stipend and let their coverage, then it would be, then there would probably be some budget effect. But if you kept them at the lower stipend, if you kept them with the current arrangement till the end of the year, it's gonna be a fine resolution, right?
All right, well, that's just, just one thought.
Councillor Marshall, any questions, comments?
No, I'm in line with one, but if everybody's gonna go with two, then.
Okay, and then what about the timing of it? Are we okay with, I'm hearing, I'm like, I, like, I've heard July and I've heard January, so I've heard now two for July.
Can somebody just re-clarify for me to make sure that the, the insurance part is covered?
So what will happen? I mean, do you want staff to do it?
I just want, I just want to be clear because of when insurance happens, you know, at the end of the year.
January 1st, if we like have a vote and it gets approved, then people's insurance will then move, if they have family, they will move down to a single, to individually covered on July 1st. And but that's a change in insurance, so if you have a different employer, you could pick it up. And you could also use your stipend to buy it back.
Exactly, there's always that option.
Yeah.
Right? So you wouldn't lose any coverage.
No, you're not gonna lose coverage. The individual councillor would not lose coverage. It would be the dependence if, on the family. But there, if there's an opportunity to get other insurance, you could do that. Am I?
I withdraw my caveat.
Okay. July 1, I'm hearing July 1 from councillor president, Valensuela, councillor Schimmel, Falconer, Martinez.
You can do July 1 if that's consensus.
July 1 of this year?
Yeah. Are you cool with that, Marshall?
I, yeah, I can make it happen.
Okay, councillor Guffson, did you say, are you okay with July 1?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you have what you need from us? So it's option two taking effect, so we start this new stipend effective July 1.
Okay. We'll work with city attorney's office to get the resolutions.
Mayor? Mayor, can I add one thing real quick?
Yeah.
So just to be clear, this would require us to bring back three resolutions at an upcoming meeting. Um, and, and so we will prepare those resolutions along the consensus lines and we'll bring them back at a following meeting prior to the end of the fiscal year.
Thank you. So we're gonna move on to our next work session of the evening. Remember that no public comment will be taken. The council will take no formal action and our.
Expanded your population base considerably and population growth has fueled a lot with the broader economic strength of Washington County and the Sunset Corridor has been fueling a lot of that. But it's also been a community that's scored very well on livability standards. And as a result, you've gotten a lot of population growth. Typically, we take a look at employment growth, leading population growth, but over time, you actually start seeing employment growth following population growth, particularly in commercial when you start getting certain threshold rates that support different types of retailers that you couldn't support as a smaller community. On the commute side, on the left-hand side, this is actually the city of Forest Grove. The right-hand side is Washington County. Washington County is a net importer of labor. So you get actually more people drive into Washington County than drive out of Washington County for employment. It's different in Forest Grove. You've got more leaving than coming in, but you actually still have a fairly strong base. And a lot of it's not like the bedroom community that's really severe like here in North Plains. It's a real problem. Since you're such a major bedroom community, it becomes a real fiscal thing. A lot of jurisdictions we work with try to balance the employment and the residential to get a more sustainable tax base. In the property tax dependent state like the state of Oregon, it's sort of punitive to be a bedroom community. And so a lot of communities trying to get additional industrial, commercial assessed valuation within their base for the more sustainable. Target industries that were identified with this, these are ones that started with the last one that we had done, which was about six years ago, seven years ago. You're supposed to do them every five years. If you do them every seven, you're ahead of the trend. You take a look at concentrations, what's growing, what you've done well with historically, which ones have high impacts, high wages, which are traded sector, which means ones that are export industries, and take a look, try to identify what your local advantages So for you guys, this is employment concentration. Educational services obviously is huge. You're 10 times more of that than you've got anywhere else. But you're manufacturing food metals and wood. You're significantly higher than national average. You've also got accommodation, food service above national average. Most of the rest of it tends to be below, but some of this particular measure gets offset by the fact that you have so much educational, even very strong sectors seem relatively small because the university sort of overwhelms them on the numbers. And next one. So in Washington County, let's just skip this one. We don't need to talk about Washington County. There's basically multiple forecasts out there right now. This is the regional forecast that's being done by state of Oregon, and it's a 10-year forecast of employment growth by sector over from 2022 to 2035. So I guess longer than that. But if you take a look at, actually, we extracted it as the 10-year forecast, we extracted full length. It's expecting a lot of growth in a broad range of sectors, a little bit decline in finance, insurance, everything else expanding. This is what the state basically for this broader workforce sees as the growth patterns in your region. For you guys, and we think that's the most reliable one out there, the target industries were winery and tourism, a lot of that's outside of your growth boundary, but things you can have support services within your urban growth boundary. Retirement services, which is actually a target industry, it has significant employment, but can locate in your residential zones. You've got high technology information. You've already had some discussions about, you know, the data centers, but also support services, tier two and three parts of the overall ecosystem supporting the tech concentration that's been concentrated in Hillsborough historically. Manufacturing, continue with those strengths. Those are also strong paying jobs and also export jobs. And quality of life tenants, including entertainment, which support your population base, make the residents happier, and actually also support your employers as well. They like happy residents. They also like those amenities for themselves when it's lunchtime. So we took a look at the land needs analysis. This is sort of the crux of the actual analytical part of this. And we go one more. First of all, your employment zones, you have a significant amount of employment counts primarily in the northeast and southeast of town. Most of your employment concentrations, you've got some commercial pieces up in the David Hill Road area, but basically the things that you know about to the south and the ones when you first come in before you come, where I first come in all the time, but north of McMenamin's up there. And so you've got some industrial, you've got some concentrations of industrial space as well as light industrial space. There's a lot of wetland in there. There's a lot of sort of underutilized sites in there. But this is the land inventory that we found. This inventory is basically, part of our analysis did not include a recalculation of your buildable land inventory. Metro generates your buildable land inventory, keeps track of it as part of the R-list system, and the city contributes to that, just reviewing those sites to make sure they're there. You've got some significant land assets. If we take a look at it, you've got total acreage of employment lands in that of 312 acres between vacant and partially vacant. Keep in mind, only 116 acres of it is truly vacant. There's a lot of partially vacant in there, particularly in the general industrial. This doesn't always become available. Metro will count this as your buildable land inventory. But a lot of times you're storing things on it. And if you go through your land inventory out there, you've got a lot of sites that people are storing stuff on. That may be long-term part of their business. They might, they not be a short-term, you know, interim thing that may actually tie those sites up for a long period of time. There's a real disconnect and people in development community complain about this all the time because the land use system recognizes a part of site is being available. The development industry doesn't see it available unless they actually have an option to buy it. And a lot of these sites aren't available to buy. Assumption is that, well, within 20 years, maybe they will be. But it's important to note, there's a vacant and then the partially vacant are somewhat more difficult to get to. For the land needs, we take a look at the forecasted employment by sector, convert it to space needs, what sort of office space, industrial space, distribution logistics space you would need, and then it turns into site land needs. And that's sort of the basic conversion, bring it down. We took a look at your current base, which looks like you've got about 7,800 jobs within your urban growth boundary right now. There's 7,600 that are part of your, well, 7,800 QCW, which is covered employment. And then there's a gross up to account for self-employed, which brings it up to just under 8,500 jobs in there. The QCW comes from people who file for unemployment insurance, what the companies do every quarter when you do your filings, but people who are self-employed, a lot of them don't submit on this, so it's usually a higher number. And so for the employment forecast scenarios, these are sort of the big differential between the three pieces. And this is one of the questions I believe Commissioner Schimmel had brought up about taking a look at it. We took at three scenarios. Scenario one is sort of what's called, was one of the many safe harbor approaches, which means if you use this particular forecast technique, the state will just accept it. There's no basis for appeal. They can't do anything. This is taking their forecast, which is a forecast I presented, applying it to your current distribution of employment. This case, it yielded about an average annual growth rate of 1.3% or 2,500 net new jobs over the next 20 years. This was a scenario that basically the planning commission recommended. Scenario two is based on Metro's urban growth report, which is remarkably pessimistic on growth, particularly industrial growth. And this, yeah, rejected by the Economic Development Commission. Everyone's economic development commission is rejecting this forecast, but it is our official forecast as a region, but it's not, but DLC doesn't hold you to this. And they only have a 0.3% growth rate. So you'd add just under 600 jobs over the next 20 years, and virtually none of those would be industrial jobs. Scenario three is a more optimistic, where we basically took the scenario one and took some of your target industries instead of what if we actually outcompeted? And we worked, you know, changed that trajectory, that growth rate a little bit, and came up with a 1.9% growth rate, adding 3,800 jobs over the next 20 years. We would typically have said somewhere between scenario, either scenario one or three would have been the options. Planning Commission was scenario one is the safe one. Scenario three gets you a little bit of shortage, we'll get to a little bit, but it's still within the urban growth boundary. So this just takes the basic forecast, and I've already summarized in the last one, so let's go one more. This takes, oh, sorry, there's that one. This takes a look at what the scenarios look like relative to your historic growth, and we did sort of a logarithmic and a linear case forecast piece. And basically, scenario one's a little bit below your historic pace as far as magnitude of growth, if you went, took a lineal projection. And scenario three would be a little bit above your pace. You know, you can always outperform dramatically. One of the issues you run into with a big regional metropolitan area like Portland metropolitan area is it only takes one employer to blow your entire land supply out. We're talking about 300 acres. There's 300 acre employers out there. You could go through your land supply in one year. It is important to note, though, that you can always come back and redo these goal nines when that happens. We did Hillsborough's for, I don't know, 20 years, and they'd go out there and they'd put 600 acres out, and they'd go through 500 acres in the first year, and they'd say, okay, we'll come back, we need more land. And one of the things you've got going, not going for you, but can help you on the economic development side, is Hillsborough's running into a roadblock right now. They did the grand bargain. They don't have any, they're in jail. They can't add their land supply there. And, you know, North Plains is going to try to take advantage of that probably. It'd help you too. But Hillsborough has limited ability to accommodate their growth. So basically, your growth trajectory can change dramatically just because you're part of a much broader system. And if suddenly the leakage slides out and you get a bunch more of the share off Hillsborough, you could blow through your land supply really quickly. But you have recourse if that happens. The problem is you have to go through Metro, they just changed urban growth boundary, and that's like a seven to 10-year process after all the court cases go through. So protected land needs scenarios, we took a look at the demand by different use type. We broke it out between office, institutional, which is primarily government, flex business park, general industrial warehouse, and retail space, net acres required. And the scenario we, they were going with was 140 acres. If they took the scenario three, it'd be 232 in total. Industrial acres actually doubled in scenario three because the target industries were sort of leaning a little more towards industrial because of the manufacturing piece. And next one. You start reconciling with that, and what happens is you don't have, and the only time that you would actually have a net need, that you don't have adequate land supply with your buildable land inventory would be for commercial space under scenario three, where you need a lot more commercial space, but you still have adequate industrial, because even on scenario three, you're only looking at 102 acres of industrial demand, and you got 250 acres of land. It doesn't mean you've got the right land. Keep that in mind. You're probably going to have employers come through and look for certain things that you can't do. If you guys, there's many things that can alter this, which we ran across doing this. One is, there's enormous need right now for data centers. Your power, your ability to get the power and water is the limiting function, just like every jurisdiction trying to get data centers. And if you could solve the power, there's almost unlimited demand. We're working on, our firms working on data centers for private developers and major companies all over the Western United States right now. They just can't build them quick enough. And I don't know what we're doing. We're making goofy, using our AI to do video conversions so we can have our families in Studio Ghibli style or something. But there's a lot of processing power going to the AI right now, and everyone's trying to ban that capability quickly. But if you do that, you would quickly, you could quickly consume really large parcels of property. I'm working on a 1,200-acre one in a jurisdiction right now, so they can get really big really quick. But again, we didn't put a lot of that in because we don't, you don't have a lot of power availability, right? So there's a limit of how much you can do. So key findings, the EOA, well, I think we're running late on this thing. So basically, you've got adequate supply unless you take, unless you're talking about commercial under scenario three within your urban growth boundary, there may be some ability to transfer or shift them. The difficulty for commercial space is where your industrial space is right now, it's not well-suited to convert that to commercial. I mean, nobody wants commercial in your southeast corner back there behind the industrial, right? That's not going to be a good commercial location. Or the stuff when you first come in, it's going to be more difficult. So you could try to address it through that, but it's probably the wrong location for So otherwise, you seem to have adequate land supply. I mean, you really need to monitor this if you go forward because you can go through it really quickly. And to make sure that, you know, always review this stuff that Metro has on your buildable land inventory. They're actually very receptive if you help them clean up your buildable land inventory and say, this site actually should be removed. They'll typically do that. They'll, they ask for that input and, you know, they've been wrong so many times, which you're going to be if you're trying to do the region on GAS, you're going to have mistakes. And so they're usually counting the jurisdictions to clean up the mistakes. And again, you may have specific employers that you don't have the right land for. So in aggregate, yes, you look right, but depending on your land needs, there's some of these, you just may not be able to accommodate.
Why don't we, because we're running short on time, the policy recommendations are in the, in the presentation, and these policy recommendations provide a good basis for a subsequent economic development strategic plan. That's really the, provides a strong basis for it, but it gets into supporting targeted industries and supporting small business development. But in the limited time that we have left, if there are any additional questions or any questions that the council has, we'd be able to.
Are these, are these policy recommendations going into the 2040 plan, the vision plan? Like, how is that going to be? What's the intersection? Just so, I mean, we've been doing all this work, so I just really want to make sure we have a layered approach at looking at.
I don't know how much of this information has been conveyed to the Forest Grove 2040 moving forward plan. However, the implementation tool for the visioning process is through the comprehensive plan, the development code, and also the economic development strategic plan. So what the EOA does is provide the policy basis. It's actually part of the comprehensive plan, and then that can be used too. So that's where the tie-in is between the two is with the comprehensive plan.
Perfect. Any other questions, Counselor Falconer?
I guess maybe I just, I appreciate that, and I also just, I, I don't know how much more time is left in the visioning process, but I do think that, you know, a conversation about our land and a change in use is probably an important concept for the 2040 visioning people to be grappling with long before we get to a comprehensive.
They are conducting visioning labs for different emphasis. I attended the one on housing. I know there are other ones as well. The vision does include and focuses on providing economic opportunity, so that's a clear tie-in with the EOA as well. It doesn't get into the level of detail about target industries or anything like that or zoning land, how much land should be held in reserve for employment uses. That would be later.
Yeah, okay.
Counselor Schimmel, then Counselor Gustin.
I assume that might get reconciled on the implementation side. We take a look at available land, the wants and the budget, and see where there's some compatibility.
Yeah, that's basically the focus of the EOA process, is that reconciliation, looking at what the projected demand is, the forecast, how much land is designated for employment uses. And the reason is that this is related to statewide planning goal nine. And we're obligated under the statewide land use planning goals to provide opportunity to meet long-term 20-year needs for all types of places, so not just housing, but also employment. And so this is, this is the mechanism to look at whether we have sufficient lands to meet projected 20-year needs or we don't, to look at. Just for context, I took a look at the land absorption for industrial in particular since the last EOA in 2019, and it was about 24 acres. It was the MGC Pure site, which was about 17 acres, then the Old Trapper expansion was about four.
Counselor Gustin.
When you were talking about the target industries, you mentioned tourism, food manufacturing, high tech. You mentioned export jobs. What, what were you talking about there?
Well, manufacturing is typically export, but actually so is your educational. Export jobs are typically what they call a basic industry or traded sector. You hear a lot of things in economic development. What it really means is something you produce that's sold outside of your jurisdiction, which brings net money in. In the case of education, basically, you're educating people and shipping them out.
Got it.
And the education's your value add that you do locally, and that's a net new. So people tend to focus on those because they bring net new wealth into the community. So Woodfold Doors, you know, almost all that's export, right? Intel's obviously a major exporter. The Saki, unless you guys drink a lot of Saki, it's going to be export. Those are the types of things that they tend to focus on, and the state has really prioritized the things that they like to see and see accommodated. But they're called a lot of different things, but it's all the same thing.
Okay. Seeing no further questions, I'm going to thank you gentlemen for the presentation.
Thank you so much.
I'm going to adjourn this work session of the Forest Grove City Council, and we're going to reconvene at 7:10 for the meeting. So we have an eight-minute bio break. Thank you. I'd like to, I would like, don't, I gotta wait for you.
I'll wait for Ray.
Turn your mic off.
Nope, you're doing your job. Good evening. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Forest Grove City Council on Monday, April 14th at 7:10 PM. Will our city recorder please call roll?
Counselor Gustin?
Here.
Counselor President Valenzuela?
Here.
Counselor Schimmel?
Here.
Counselor Falconer?
Here.
Counselor Martinez?
Here.
Counselor Marshall?
Here.
Mayor Wenzel?
Here.
Forest Grove City Council meetings are located on the land of the Toallatin Kalapuas, who call themselves the Apalati. They are now part of the Confederate tribes of Grand Ron. Will the council and audience please join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
We're going to wait for Council President to come down. Hello, testing, okay. So we have our, thank you to the Forestry Commission members who are here tonight to accept this proclamation and to give a presentation. Whereas Arbor Day was first observed in 1872 with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska. And whereas the Forest Grove community continues the tradition of environmental stewardship by conserving, preserving, and restoring our local urban forest. And whereas the community appreciates the many benefits trees provide to our residents, businesses, and visitors. And whereas National Arbor Dray, excuse me, whereas the National Arbor Day Foundation has recognized Forest Grove as a Tree City USA due to our community's commitment to effective forest management over the last year. And whereas calendar year 2023 marks the 34th consecutive year Forest Grove has received Tree City USA designation. And whereas the Forest Grove Community Forestry Commission recognizes the stewardship of Forest Grove community over the past 34 years to advance the city's urban forestry efforts. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Forest Grove does hereby proclaim the month of April as Arbor Month in Forest Grove, Oregon, and encourages the community to support the spirit and tradition of the first Arbor Day by planting trees for the benefit of our community. Thank you.
Proclamación. Considerando que el día del árbol se observó por primera vez en 1872 con la plantación de más de un millón de árboles en Nebraska. Y considerando que la comunidad de Forest Grove continúa con esta tradición de administración ambiental, conservando, preservando, y restaurando nuestro bosque urbano local. Y considerando que nuestra comunidad aprecia los muchos beneficios que los árboles brindan a nuestros residentes, negocios, y visitantes. Y considerando que la Fundación Nacional del Día del Árbol ha reconocido Forest Grove como Tree City USA debido al compromiso de nuestra comunidad con la gestión forestal eficaz durante el último año. Y considerando que el año calendario 2023 marca el 34º año consecutivo en que Forest Grove ha recibido la designación de Tree City USA. Y considerando que la Comisión Forestal de la comunidad de Forest Grove reconoce la administración de la comunidad de Forest Grove durante los últimos 34 años para promover los esfuerzos de silvicultura urbana de la ciudad. Ahora, por lo tanto, el ayuntamiento de la ciudad de Forest Grove, por la presente, proclama el mes de abril 2025 como el mes del árbol en Forest Grove, Oregon, y se alienta la comunidad de Forest Grove a apoyar el espíritu y la tradición del primer día del árbol, plantando árboles en beneficio de nuestra comunidad. En testimonio, ha suscrito la presente y ha hecho que el sello de la ciudad de Forest Grove, Oregon, se emplace en este día 14 de abril de 2025, nuestra alcaldesa, Malina.
There we go. Oregon sees higher rates of domestic violence, sexual assault, and childhood trauma than the national average. And whereas child abuse and sexual violence are some of the most serious public health issues, with numerous studies documenting the link between trauma and a wide range of medical, emotional, psychological, and behavioral experiences with both short and long-term effects. And whereas children who experience abuse are uniquely affected because they are still developing and therefore suffer lifelong effects to their physical and emotional health. And whereas sexual violence, childhood abuse, and interpersonal crime affect all people, but disproportionately affect those impacted by systemic inequities. And whereas the harm does occur, we are determined to respond by helping survivors find not only safety, healing, and justice, but also equitable access to services, a sense of hope for their future, and the tools to rebuild their lives. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Forest Grove does hereby proclaim April 2025 and April 6 through April 12th, last week 2025, as Child Abuse Prevention Month, Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and Crime Victims Rights Week. In Forest Grove, Oregon, and reaffirms the commitment to supporting a coordinated and collaborative community of providers that deliver intervention and prevention services of violence and abuse all year long. Thank you.
Proclamación. Considerando que Oregon registra tasas más altas de violencia doméstica, agresión sexual, y trauma infantil que el promedio nacional. Y considerando que el abuso infantil y la violencia sexual son algunos de los problemas de salud pública más serios, y que numerosos estudios documentan el vínculo entre el trauma y una amplia gama de experiencias médicas, emocionales, psicológicas, y conductuales, con efectos tanto a corto como a largo plazo. Considerando que los niños que sufren abusos se ven especialmente afectados porque aún se están desarrollando, y por lo tanto sufren efectos permanentes en su salud física y emocional. Considerando que la violencia sexual, el abuso infantil, y los delitos interpersonales afectan a todas las personas, pero afectan de manera desproporcionada a quienes se ven afectados por desigualdades sistémicas. Considerando que cuando ocurre un daño estamos decididos a responder, ayudando a los sobrevivientes a encontrar no solo seguridad, curación, y justicia, sino también acceso equitativo a los servicios, un sentido de esperanza para su futuro, y las herramientas para reconstruir sus vidas. Ahora, por lo tanto, el ayuntamiento de la ciudad de Forest Grove, por la presente, proclama al mes de abril 2025 y a la semana del 6 al 12 de abril 2025 como mes de la prevención del abuso infantil, mes de la concientización de la agresión sexual, y semana de los derechos de víctimas del delito. Ha suscrito la presente y ha hecho que el sello de la ciudad de Forest Grove se emplace en este día 14 de abril 2025, nuestra alcaldesa, Melinda White. nuestra alcaldesa, Melinda White. Okay, thank you, we're gonna move on to item B on our agenda. Public comment, time provided for anyone wishing to speak to city council on an item not on the agenda or on the agenda but not scheduled for a public hearing. Comments are limited to two minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer. The public comment period shall not exceed 30 minutes unless a majority of councillors present vote to extend the time. Zoom attendees may use the raise hand feature, oops, option to be called on. Okay, and I'm gonna open up the public comment period, and Mr. Dale Feek is our first guest. Go ahead, sorry, were you waiting for me?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I was like looking at my notes, I'm sorry, Mr. Feek.
I was doing mine too, so I'm glad you gave me time, and my time hasn't started. But time has started, wait a minute.
Right, give him back his two seconds, please. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Feek.
Presiding Officer, Melinda Wenzel, mayor and councillors, I'm Dale Feek, resident of Forest Grove since 1966. I'm requesting, since there's only one other person, three minutes, but I prefer four. Can you give me president office, or you have the power to give me?
Yeah, I'm gonna give you three minutes.
Thirty minutes?
Three.
Oh, three minutes, I thought you said third.
No, no, no.
Scared me.
Scared the whole council.
Look at that, I've already used. I sent you an email. Myra Clark said that I didn't know you got it, it's not in your packet, but you can read it through email. It's very important you read the four attachment, because if you really want to understand what a local emergency, yes, you want to understand what a local emergency planning committee is, and how I tried to get that started in 2015, you understand a little history, and how it actually finally got established in 2022 with bylaws. It's very important for the city of Forest Grove, and also for everybody that lives in Washington County. So, I have two minutes. So, the main thing for that is, and I gave you a summary, a quick thing. I asked the question, local emergency planning committee, what is it and why was it formed? That's the answer to the question, who was on the committee, who are the officers, who in the county should they contact? When is the next meeting and schedule of meetings? How can residents get access to site-specific emergency plans for their current 41 facilities who have written plans? What are the names of the facilities and where are they located, and some are located right in Forest Grove? So if you want to learn more, I know a lot about it. I went to the state local planning committee in Redmond for a couple days. I'm fairly knowledgeable about how the local planning committee gets started. That's topic one. Topic two is crane data center. I don't know if the city is really following the rules yet about that, because I submitted a written comment to the Oregon Department of Lands, and they have not yet received a permit on wetland mitigation. And they shouldn't be doing any building over there based upon wetlands until they got the okay from the state to do so. So you have then a written summary of that on the second part of it. And I talked with Michael DeBlassi this morning, okay, about this, and I asked him to put in writing what he told me, and that's what he did. I've since sent that and forwarded it to Dave Dan, he's here, I let him know he's busy today, he didn't get back to me. So it's important for you to take a look at that, because it's important to get certification that the mitigation has been done, or there's a plan for it, and there has not. And they're supposed to get back to me, and they have not done that, because I made public comment in writing, and they're supposed to, Crane Data Center is supposed to get back to me before they start building, at least the part in sweatland. So just please be aware of that, I'm in contact with them, and there may be a stop order if they really start to build the road through the wetlands. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Schimmel would like to address you.
Mr. Feek, if I may, I just want to make an acknowledgement for the time you've dedicated to engagement and transparency, accountability at both this level and the county commissioners away from your retirement. And I know your personal conviction for doing that, and I applaud it. And you're a great role model for the level of public engagement I hope we can accomplish in our community. So thank you for being here.
Thank you very much. Also, I'll be making public comment to the county commissioners at 10 o'clock tomorrow. I not just make public comment, I go to the work sessions, I learn, and you know that because you saw me on camera, right? So it's important to not be knowledgeable, talk from information, so thank you very much, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feek. Thank you, councillor, thank you, Mr. Feek. Our second public comment is from Mary Ann Anderson.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'll try and be fast. I'm addressing the topic of water fluoridation, and the question is an ethical one. The implication of mass medication through public water fluoridation, as it doesn't allow for individual control of the intake. As you know, you would need a prescription if you wanted to take fluoride or give it to your children. Forest Grove started fluoridating its water, I think, in 1952. My question is, was there long-term studies done and research before it was put into the water system? So that's a question I have. Does the public works, do they keep track of ongoing research that's being done on effects of our help and fluoridation? There's quite a few, there's quite a bit of research that's happened and is ongoing. Some of it is brittle bones, discolored teeth, renal function, melatonin production, thyroid function. Fluoride allergies are rare, but they do happen, and also children's IQ, that's an ongoing research project that they're doing. A number of cities have decided to stop fluoridating their water, and others have decided not to even start doing it, as Hillsborough did with their voting just in November. Phlorosilic acid is what they use in fluoride, in the fluoride in our water, which is a common byproduct of phosphate fertilizer. So what would it take to have the fluoride removed from our city's water system, is my question, another question I.
Okay, thank you for your public comment. We, I'm not gonna answer your last question, because I'm not in a position to at this point without council discussion, but we have had other comments about fluoride, and so today, I don't know if you saw on the agenda.
That's why I'm here, because I saw it on the agenda.
Yeah, so we're gonna have a presentation, and I think that's the first step in educating the council about the fluoride, and then we'll see if there's discussion to do anything further. That would be like the process. Thank you, Mrs. Anderson. Okay, anyone else in the audience wishing to give public comment? Seeing none, anyone in Zoom or on Zoom listening from a device wish to give public comment? Like, seeing none, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine, and will all be adopted with a single motion without separate discussion. Councillors who wish to remove an item from the consent agenda may do so prior to the motion. Any item or items removed will be discussed and acted upon following the approval of the remaining items. What is the wish of the council?
I wish to have number eight removed, 2025 annual proclamations.
Okay, is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay, so it was moved by Counselor Martinez and seconded by Counselor Gustafson to remove C8. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say aye.
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 One, or two, so how many, can we, can we do a, can we do a roll call votes? I can't tell, I've had, sorry, lots of meetings today.
Counselor Falconer?
No.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Marshall?
Yes.
Counselor Gustafson?
Yes.
Counselor Valenzuela?
Nay.
Counselor Schimmel?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes. So in a vote of five to two, we're gonna remove it. Is there a motion for the remaining items to?
I move that the remainder of the items be passed.
Second.
So Counselor Martinez moved that consent agenda items one through seven be approved, and it was seconded by Counselor Valenzuela, I think. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, hearing none. Counsel or consent agenda items one through seven are approved unanimously by the Forest Grove City Council. Counselor Martinez, do you want to talk to us about C8?
So, um, the one that I do have some issue with is Pride Month. Being, it is a very politicized event for communities, and that when, I would prefer it be Life Month or something else besides Pride Month. I don't think that we should do a special month for a special group of people.
Okay, Counselor Gustafson.
Are we in discussion?
Yeah, we're in discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. I understand the political impact of LGBTQ. But a lot of these proclamations are for special groups of people. I'm a survivor of a multiple-time violence, and I'm one of those special people, because we just talked about it. So it's just category by category, and this is a protected group, so I'm supportive of Pride Month.
Okay. I'll second what Counselor Gustafson is saying.
Okay, so.
For, I mean, if we do not do that, I think we need to not do proclamations, because they are for special groups, acknowledgements of people that have had struggles, issues of belonging in the community, in the country, really.
Mariah, when consent agenda is removed, and then is there a motion that needs to be made? I mean, to remove it, or, and then, and/or is there some motion to then pass?
So after discussion about it, then there would be another motion to pass it, and then a vote on that motion.
If someone wanted to remove something off of that, then there would be a motion to remove it before, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so a motion to remove that item, you would vote on that amended.
Okay, sorry, just want to make sure processes. Counselor Gustafson?
I just want to be clear that I understand the polarization of the acceptance of this group, and many groups. But the treatment and the proclamation of us accepting all people and treating them all the same, to me is what this is about, it's, that's what's primary. So it's not forcing, which I know might be the perspective, to me, it's not forcing a belief on somebody. It's saying that we need to accept everybody as a person and treat them as equals.
As human beings, really.
Yeah. You know, I'm gonna, I appreciate what you're saying, but I want to be clear, for me, I guess on my point, like, I don't think that, you said like the polarization of this group, or the, and I don't think this group causes polarization.
That's not what I was saying.
That's what I thought you said.
No, 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 I'm sorry.
I was like, wait, 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 like, it's not politicized, it's not, it's like, to me, that's, if I misunderstood.
There's people that agree, and there's people that don't agree. But no, there's, I wasn't talking about this specifically, no.
Yeah, I think, okay, I can understand that, but I also think we're not, the proclamation doesn't alienate or discriminate against anybody.
Correct, that's not what I was saying at all. Quite the opposite.
Okay, I was like, wait.
No, no.
Heart rate jumped out of my chest. Okay, so is there?
I just have to say, I have friends of all different persuasions, and it's not against people who, those who want to celebrate Pride Month, and they have the right to do that. I don't know that that is, should be city speech, is what I'm saying. I think that our values say diversity, equity, and inclusion, and accessibility. And I believe, and I know, that there are people here who identify as gay, lesbian, transgender, intersex, asexual, queer. And it's our job to make sure that everybody, regardless of however you identify as, feels safe and comfortable in a part of this community. So to me, like, existing does not divide, or does not, like, we're just saying, hey, like, we see you, you are fine here. Like, we're just affirming equality, equal rights, and that people don't have to hide because of how other people. It's not fair to ask other people to be less than who they are to make other people feel comfortable. Like, everyone gets to show up as they are and gets to feel comfortable. And I don't, I don't think they need to hide either, that's not the point at all. My heart is not that way, and I have very dear friends, as I said, of many different persuasions. So it's nothing about that, it's what we do when we're out in the community, too, how we treat people, all of us.
I agree.
So it doesn't have anything to do with that needing to be city speech?
Counselor Martinez, I'm sorry, did you say free speech?
It doesn't need to be city speech.
Oh, city speech, okay.
I'm gonna let Counselor Schimmel speak, and then Counselor Gustafson.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that Counselor Martinez, you were able to express everything that you wanted to. It was worth it to pull this out, to understand your perspective. I appreciate you and believe what you're expressing from your heart. That said, I make a motion to approve the staff report as written.
I'll second.
Any, do we do further discussion on this? No, we already did our discussion, right? So it was moved by Counselor Schimmel to approve C8 and seconded by Counselor Falconer. Let's do a roll call vote, please. This is for item C8, annual proclamations.
Counsel President Valenzuela?
Yes.
Counselor Schimmel?
Yes.
Counselor Falconer?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
No.
Counselor Marshall?
No.
Counselor Gustafson?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes, in a vote of five in favor and two nays, C8 is approved by the Forest Grove City Council. Great, item D, city manager, additions or additions, sorry, let me regroup. Item D on our agenda is additions and deletions. City manager, do you have any additions or deletions?
I have no additions or deletions, thank you, mayor.
Okay. D2, any proposed by council? Counselor Gustafson?
I have an addition for a verification for a letter request.
That's moved by Counselor Gustafson for verification of letter request.
It's for a travel letter, just for a verification of my position as a city council.
I'm just, yeah, I'm waiting for, to see if there's a second or. It was moved by Counselor Gustafson and seconded by Counselor Marshall. Can we put it on as F2, city manager?
Yeah, an addition would be under F2, I believe.
Yeah, because we have an F1, so we can put it under, we'll just add it underneath Public Hearings, Orchesters, and Resolutions to F2.
Correct.
Okay. I'm just gonna put it as travel letter. Counselor Gustafson? That work for you? Okay. Cool. Now we will move on to presentations. The council will hold questions until the end of each presentation. A two-minute reminder will be given to the presenter to conclude remarks. Our first presentation of the night is from the Family Justice Center, and it's Rachel Shutz. If you can make your way to the table in the front.
Good evening, thank you so much for having me.
Thank you.
On?
Is it, it's a light red?
Yes.
Yes, then you're good to go.
Thank you. I wanted to come to present to all of you our 2024 annual report for the Family Justice Center of Washington County. So you should have that in your packet, and I'm gonna go over it in here, just the highlights, and then if the council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. But this year, as with all the other years that I have visited you, we served more survivors and provided more services than years in the past. And I always come to you and say that that is a bittersweet statement, and I am coming to see that that's sweeter, more than bitter. And the reason is, is because this has started to tell me that we are finally beginning to reach the need. And the reason is, is because this has started to tell me that we are finally beginning to reach the need that is in Washington County. Um, I don't believe any longer that the rates of violence or abuse are going up in Washington County. Post-pandemic, they were indeed, um, and we were catching up essentially from a backlog of those things. Um, but now I start, I believe that we are starting to reach out into the different parts of Washington County, all the different areas, and potentially start to, um, expose all the areas in which it was silent for so long. And so these public conversations, um, having, uh, the city councils address these, having proclamations being read, um, and having so much available information has really started to, um, increase the amount of people that are feeling confident enough to come forward to start talking about what's been going on. And so in, uh, 2024, the Family Justice Center served, um, 7,202 survivors and provided 11,691 services, which is the most in Family Justice Centers' history. Part of that, um, in addition to expanded outreach, was also due to expanded programming. So we had, um, two additional partnerships that grew over the year, as well as provided some pretty significant increases in services. Um, so one of those things was the, uh, county-wide risk assessment that went into effect. And so in Washington County now, when there are, um, calls for domestic or sexual violence to the police, uh, there is now a risk assessment that is done on scene with the victim to assess how much danger is that individual in? Should they be in contact with the person that has, has caused harm to them again? What's unique about this risk assessment here in Washington County is that risk assessment is then transmitted, um, to the jail and then the pre-trial release officers, and then also to the judge and the district attorneys, as well as the other attorneys. So everybody inside of the system has an evidence-based tool for assessing both risk and the appropriate supervision for this individual. Um, so that has really increased communication and collaboration across all of our different spheres, both, um, the nonprofit victim services, and then the systems-based victim services, and then also now the offender accountability systems. And so that really increases our ability to, um, make sure that survivors are safe. The other really big, um, move that we made this past year was taking our very small and modest food pantry, um, that was being, uh, that was running through, uh, donations from the community, from churches, from, um, civic groups, to partnering with the Oregon Food Bank and having it be a full, um, operating food pantry with canned food, fresh food, frozen food, meat, eggs, all those types of things. Um, I had no idea how big of an impact that would make. Uh, in the first year, we provided over 22,000 pounds of food to our survivors. And, um, it's only increased at this year. We have, um, that we are now picking up, uh, we're picking up once a week. We're looking at how to move to picking up twice a week and currently distributing 1,200 pounds of food a week through the Family Justice Center, which is pretty incredible. Um, and then we also created an outreach project utilizing our Voices Survivor Advisory Committee so they can use their lived experience to reach out to the community and provide essentially peer support in, um, public places so that, uh, folks can connect with those, our survivors wherever they need to. Um, so, as I shared, we served 7,200 folks with over 11,600 services, um, both of which were an increase. And what is new to your packet this year that I sort of wanted to highlight was the impact that survivors were reporting themselves. Um, this is a really important piece for me to know what the experience was when folks were coming through the Family Justice Center. Um, and so just a couple highlights was 99.4% of survivors reported that they experienced trauma-informed care while they were at the Family Justice Center. 100% of survivors reported that they received the help they needed to keep their family safe. 100% of survivors felt that their children and themselves were cared for by staff. And 89.2% of survivors reported that after their visit, they could see their path towards safety, healing, and hope. Um, more than even just the raw numbers, it's the personal experiences of survivors coming through that we really want to base our metrics off of. How well are we doing? What kind of services are we providing to the community? Is, um, how did, how were people able to access us? So, um, that leads me to the demographics from Forest Grove, which are always exciting to report out to you. Um, so we saw a good increase in folks that were coming from Forest Grove. So we provided 123 survivors from Forest Grove with 203 services. And that's a 23% growth over, uh, 2023, which is fantastic. And so since 2021, we've provided 326 survivors with 590 services. So you can see about a third of those came in 2024, which means that the increase in Forest Grove, um, has really, uh, been successful. Um, there's a couple things that we were able to do in Forest Grove over this past year that I think really helped, which was, we were able to have tables at, um, Adelante's, um, Farmer's Market, which ended up being great. And, um, specifically during Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we were able to have a table there every week, which was really good for, um, reaching out to the population. And also, Adelante is now providing services inside of the Family Justice Center. So we're kind of moving back and forth for one another. Um, and so through that partnership, and, and we see that all the time when we have organizations that start to come into the Family Justice Center and provide services, is their population in their home location now knows more information about the Family Justice Center and is able to make that warm referral and that warm handoff. And so we're starting to see more of those folks, um, from our connection with Adelante Mujeres two years in, which I'm really pleased about. And so the final parts of the report are just some highlights over the past year. Um, we, uh, Senator Jeff Merkley presented the Family Justice Center with the flag that flew over the Capitol, which was a huge honor. Um, we had our Run for Hope and our Survivor, um, Voices of Hope Survivor Art Gallery, and then our food boxes and our holiday events that we always do. So that is our 2024 report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Any questions? Okay, we have a few. So we'll start with Councillor Gustafson and then Councillor Schimmel.
Um, thank you again for being here. Um, are you receiving services or, um, the groceries from any of the grocers in the area? Or are they just donations from different people?
That's a great question. So initially, when we started our food pantry, we were receiving donations from local churches. Um, and that was largely because they were partnered with the Oregon Food Bank, and they were, um, they were giving us their extras, which worked really, really well. Um, then what happened is, once the Oregon, uh, the pandemic food benefits ended, they had, they didn't have any extras because they were seeing such a high volume of people that needed support. And so they weren't able to donate food to us anymore. And so we moved to partnering with the Oregon Food Bank where we could pick those up. To answer your question about the grocery stores, we are not receiving those yet. And the reason is, is because we have to have enough capacity to store all those prepared foods. And we don't have that yet. But we are already in conversation with them for the Family Peace Center, um, which we will have open in April of 26.
And how are you gauging the accuracy of your risk scoring?
Oh, that's a good question. So the, um, risk assessment, that is utilizing a tool that was developed in Arizona and Arizona State University. It's called Appraise. Um, and that one is based off of, um, the, it's, it's parent assessment is called the dangerousness assessment. And that one was created by Dr. Jackie Campbell, and that has been studied across states. And I think it's 20 years old at this point. And so Appraise is just adopted for use by law enforcement and through the court systems. And they have, um, a few epidemiologists that have studied the effectiveness down in Arizona. And there's one other state, and then they've also studied it in Oregon to make sure that it's validated across the different systems that utilize it.
All right, and one more question. Um, you talked about, you know, the bittersweetness of the increase reporting. Um, is there a way, a technique that you're using when, um, you're having the interviews that you can establish whether this is new or, or if they've just been able to contact you so that you can differentiate between an increase in abuse versus an increase in reporting?
That's a really good question. Um, that is something that would, that's one that I would have to circle back with you because that would take, um, sort of gauging based on different partners and, um, what they're seeing and hearing in their individual intake interviews with their folks. Um, but I would be happy to, because that's a really good question.
Okay. And I, I want to thank you again. I mean, every time you come here, I get very emotional, and I, I really appreciate your organization. As a, uh, polyvictimization survivor, what you guys do is absolutely fantastic for the community. Thank you.
And thank you for your great question.
Thank you. Councillor Schimmel?
Really, Mayor, and thanks, uh, Ms. Schutz for succinctly summarizing the connection of the Forest Grove. And I would echo Councillor Gustafson's comments. Uh, can you describe any current, uh, service gaps or risks to funding sources?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for asking that question. It's a very important one. Um, current gaps are, uh, supports for children that have witnessed domestic violence. Um, and that is because it's a, it's a very special, um, set of, of kids and a very special set of trauma that they have experienced. What we know from research is that, um, kids that witness violence inside of their homes have, have the same physiological impacts on themselves as their, um, the parent that is being harmed that they're witnessing. So it causes PTSD, it causes all those different changes inside of their brains. And so having specialized services for those kiddos is extremely important, um, from a lens of witnessing that trauma. There is not enough access to mental health in Oregon in general. I think we all know that. Um, we know that Oregon is almost dead last in providing access to mental health services. But that really specialized set for kids is so important, and it's so often missed. And what we see in these families with these children is that it compounds on itself. Maybe they witnessed this when they were four, but they need, they needed those specialized services, and yet they didn't have them. And then they transition into public school, and public school has all of its own, um, challenges and supports and needs and all those types of things. And so then suddenly, we have a kiddo potentially with behavior issues or kiddo that needs to be in, have the special supports, the IEPs, but that's not quite addressing the trauma. And then it goes up and up, and then they're in after-school programs, and then they get, um, asked not to be in the after-school programs anymore, and then there isn't childcare available. And so it really just sort of spir- spirals out of control. And that's a question that I appreciate so much because that's the reason that I got into doing work around violence and abuse, is because of the downstream impacts that I was seeing, particularly with kids. And so that's, those specialized supports for those kids are so critical. Um, the funding challenges that we're seeing, the Family Justice Center is extremely lucky that they do not rely on government funds. However, a lot of our partners do. So there's a kind of organization, you guys are probably familiar with, called DVSA. So Domestic Violence Sexual Assault Organizations. They're spread all across the country. Here in Washington County, it's the Domestic Violence Resource Center and the Sexual Assault Resource Center. Then we have Safety Compass, who provides services for sex trafficking, and CARES Northwest, which provides services for, um, child abuse. They all rely on government funds, and those come from VOCA, which is the Victims of Crime Act, BAWA, which is the Violence Against Women Act, and their, their parent organization, which is the Off- Office of Violence Against Women. Those have funds that have been frozen, and so they're not able to access those funds. Or, um, there are funds that are getting paused or eliminated or reduced. So our partnership with the Oregon Food Bank, which is so critical, um, there was a change in the way the USDA is utilizing its funds, and it's currently paused for evaluation. Um, we can't access right now meat, who, um, eggs, milk, those type of things until that gets unfrozen. So there is, there is a lot of challenges and changes that are going on. The Family Justice Center, I said, is, is unique in this area right now. But a lot of our partners really do need support and access to all of these, whether it's at the federal level or at the state level or at the community level. They need support in order to continue to provide those services.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you so much, Rachel, for coming out and taking your time.
Thank you. I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Hey, E2 is our Community Forestry Commission Annual Report by the Chair of the CFC, Mr. Justin Marble, assisting with city staff, or by city staff, Dan Riordan. And?
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Thank, thank, thank you, Mayor. Before we get started, I'd just like to introduce, um, we have a member of the Forestry Commission here with us this evening, David Hunter, and our Chair, Justin Marble.
All right. Well, we're here to, uh, do the annual report. First slide, the following community members have graciously volunteered their time and provided their expertise to help support the city's urban forestry effort. Myself, Justin Marble, Mark Nakajima, Sachi Arakawa, Bruce Countryman, Michael Howell, David Hunter, and Aiden Reidman, who is our student liaison. In 2024, um, we again received the National Arbor Day Foundation, um, designation. It's our 35th year. And what we need to achieve in order to get that designation is to maintain a tree board or department, have a community tree ordinance, spend at least $2 per capita on urban forestry, and celebrate Arbor Day. So as part of that, we, we plant a tree every year or a couple of trees. And last year, we did it at Joseph Gale Park, and we were lucky enough to have kind of impromptu several, or I think it was a cup, like, two or three classes worth of students came out and got to be a part of that and just kind of watch. And we talked a little bit about Arbor Day and, and the importance of trees. Um, thank you to Ann Lane and Tom Martin with the Parks and Recreation Department. And that we planted a ponderosa pine and a western red cedar, both of which are still there and doing well, and hopefully for many more years. During 2024, the Community Forestry Commission assisted the community development and public work departments with evaluation of problem street trees in the downtown area. Um, some of you would, are probably familiar with the lifted grates and, and just, uh, issues that businesses have been having for a long time with a lot of the street trees. So we came up with a strategy to, um, to work, to work on that. The city council approved a strategy for resolving the downtown street tree issues in September. And the public works department selected a contractor. A pre-construction meeting occurred on April 4th. In March 2024, the Community Development Department coordinated the planting of 114 street trees in new subdivisions. And I, I believe that's the subdivisions that are north of, uh, David Hill Road. And right, and below that, you have our suggested street tree planting list, or a selection of that list. There's more than just that. Next slide, please. The commi- the commission will host the community tree planting event on April 25th at Thatcher Park to commemorate National Arbor Day and Oregon's Arbor Month. And tonight, the commission accepted the Arbor Day proclamation from city council. During 2025, the commission will start updating the city's urban forest management plan that was adopted in 2016. Also, during 2025, the commission will start working on a strategy for council's consideration for tree planting in developments with insufficient planting space, uh, also streets. Um, yeah, that has to do with some of these tighter developments where there's just not as much room or there may not be a. or there may not be appropriate room for trees to be able to survive in the long term. So that's something we've really been wanting to address and maybe finding something in the planning in planning policy moving forward that would leave room to have more urban forest, considering the increased density that we've been building at. In addition, this year, we the commission would like to update the city's Tour of Trees Guide that was printed in 2010. This is a little guide that I believe we got, we have nine trees on that list. And it just needs to be updated. We might be able to add some trees of significance to that list, too. And I believe that's it. So do we have any questions?
I have a question. Can we go back one slide, please, Mariah? So this is way cool. Do you think we could do like a scavenger hunt with these trees? Like oftentimes people are wanting free things to do with their family or like there's another event going on around town. And so it'd be really cool if there's like, you know, take pictures with these trees and then we can post them or, I mean, I don't know. I just think that this is, I didn't even know we had a, I'm going to be really honest. I'm the mayor. I've lived here my entire life since 1979, and I did not know we had a City Tour of Trees Guide.
I too did not.
And you've lived here your whole life, too.
Until like a couple of months ago.
Oh, okay.
Phil David brought it in, yeah.
Right. I just think that this is something I I think too, as you know, I think people always want like things they can do with their family or their friends, be active and go see. And it's like, this is, you know, an activity, like this is something that through our Parks and Rec or, I don't know, I just think it's a really cool thing that we should develop and utilize. And then, you know, layer it on when people come for, you know, sidewalk chalk festival, they could, you know, they could be checking out some other things, too. Anyways, I just think that's really cool and it piqued my interest.
Yes, thank you so much about the the guide, the little guide here. It's something that we could also have at the, like at the library, you know, where people go and they can pick up something and get an idea. Okay, you know, because I was not aware either that we had this guide. And these are really awesome things that you have done. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I believe we will put it in the library once we update it.
Yeah.
Probably City Hall, too, right?
The chamber, maybe the chamber. Sorry, Dan.
Sorry to interrupt. And in the past, we've we received requests for copies from McMenamins when they have their tourist brochures. So it's, yeah, it was widely accepted.
Yeah, I think too, like giving this to whoever's holding our tourism contract, like this is, I mean, I don't know, like, I think when you're looking for something to do, it's free and it's fun and all ages can do it, right? It's not doing a pub crawl, it's a tree crawl or like go climb a tree. Maybe not. Anyways.
If someone's on private property, you know, I think we might have issues sending a bunch of people to private properties.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Don't listen to me. Not a marketer, just an eighth grade teacher. Okay, Counselor Schimmel.
Thank you both for for being here. The one thing I'm always curious about as I walk around town is the tree health, you know, whether it's the root system or inside. Just curious if there's there's folks who test trees that look suspect. Oftentimes that we see them, they they fall down in a storm or something and and expose their their problem. Is that a part of the discussion in the commission?
It's not a particular discussion point for the commission right now. But you could you could contact a local or it doesn't have to be local. I'm not here to promote myself or or David. There are arborists here in town and elsewhere that could help you with with those sorts of questions. But as far as the commission is concerned, maybe you're asking about like street trees or just like trees that seem like they're or maybe are in public spaces. Oh, and actually, it might make sense to talk a little bit about the Light and Power Department has been removing or is slated to remove quite a few trees that threaten their utilities. And they they worked with David on that to assess a whole slew of trees and come up with kind of a priority. He made recommendations on it and and then they developed a plan for dealing with those and mitigating those risks. So there is some work there because we've all seen our our kind of like aged out white oak trees in Old Town that we have a few fall every year and sometimes more. And so, yeah, that is something that we have talked about. Light and Power is kind of working on that and has even is even paying. They're doing the work at no cost to the homeowner and lots of these.
Any other questions? Counselor Marshall.
I would just like to thank you guys. Your guys' knowledge and passion for it, you guys are in the right spot. You guys are the right guys for the job for this. You guys do a great job being in your meetings. You guys are all passionate about what you guys do and it's it's great to see. So I want to thank you guys for your.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Have a nice night. Our third presentation of the evening is an update from our Library Commission, and the Chair is Morgan Nepp, and our Director is Colleen Winters. Hello, Morgan.
Hi. Good evening. Thanks for having me, everyone. It's my pleasure to be here representing the City Library Commission and to give our 2025 Annual Report. A couple quotes to start us off. You know, there are there's one thing that many folks in our communities and throughout history have held in common, and that is the love of libraries and learning. Folks, including Albert Einstein, who said, "The only thing you absolutely need to know is the location of the library." All the way up to Laura Bush, who said, "I have found the most valuable thing in my wallet is my library card." There's also a kind of preeminent library scholar who notes that bad libraries build collections, good libraries build services, and great libraries build communities. And I'm here to confirm something that you all know, which is that Forest Grove has a great library. So commissioners that I have the pleasure of working with include Pamela Bailey, the Vice Chair, Lauren Miller, who's our Secretary, Kathleen Poulsen, Kirsten Byer, Colleen Lord, and Ed Uker, as well as our Council Liaison, Mariana Valenzuela. Lauren, Colleen, and Ed may be familiar names to you because there are three newest commissioners and we're so glad to have them with us now. The charge that we have from the city includes advising the City Council on matters pertaining to the library, advising the library director on matters affecting the operations of the library, advising, reviewing, and approving library policies, which are then forwarded to the City Council for adoption, facilitating community involvement, participating and cooperating with WCCLS, which is the Washington County Cooperative Library Services, which is the organization upon which we are a part, our library is a member of that cooperative, and participating and cooperating with the Friends of the Forest Grove Library and the Forest Grove Library. We also, as a commission, have our own goals. Our 2025 goals include to continue providing input on the library staff's current projects and needs, reviewing all current Forest Grove City Library policies, the majority of which were all approved in 2017 and are just getting eyes on them again. And at some point in the future, you all may as well if we determine that some changes are needed to those policies. Assisting with ideas and activities for the Celebration of National Library Week, which of course just happened this past week and which we got to recognize the the good work of our librarians. Also hosting the annual gathering of the groups to which you all will receive an invitation. Strengthening the community ties. This year, we've identified the City Council, other Forest Grove Boards and Commissions, other members of WCCLS, their commissions, and other local libraries, specifically the Pacific University Library and the Forest Grove High School Library, as being of particular interest to us. Supporting the Friends Freedom to Read events, developing guidance for public art in the library, and staying engaged with the WCCLS's current structure and governance and funding review and developing changes. We are lucky enough as a commission to not be the only strong supporter of this library. We're joined by the Friends of the Forest Grove Library, Forest Grove Library Foundation, you all on the City Council, and a wide array of community members who are patrons, volunteers, and philanthropists, which has included several recent bequests that are going to result in some really exciting updates in the library, which you will be hearing about momentarily. So what's new since you all heard from the commission last time? All of the ARPA-funded projects have been completed. That includes the west and east end bathrooms and the teen area, the ribbon cutting of which took place on March 1st. You can see our mayor among the people that are here, very lucky to be using a pair of giant scissors, which is one of the things on my bucket list that I hope to check off one day.
Just to interrupt really quick, Morgan, those the two members cutting the ribbon are some of the first teen library council members, Sam Ruder and Rowan Callar. So I saw it was really cool that Lily invited them back to speak and then they got to, this was their idea. It was so cool. So anyway, sorry for interrupting, but I had to give a shout out to the kids.
The library has also been one of the participating members in the statewide expansion of Dolly Parton's Imagination Library, which is bringing free books to children in our communities signing up through the library. The books are being mailed directly to their home as part of that program. So what's coming next, changes that you will be seeing at the library shortly? We are about to embark on a kind of enhancement process for the exterior of the west entrance. That's the entrance that abuts the police department and the kind of alleyway that runs between the two. There's also soon to be some very exciting renovation happening in the children's area, made possible by one of those bequests that I mentioned. And there's some repurposing going on in the fireplace area down on the other side of the building, which is going to allow that space to be more available for programming and events with some moving out of shelving in that area. We're also working on exploring the possibility of new murals throughout the building. Locations and all details are TBD, but some locations that are being looked at are the Spanish language area, the teen room, of course, and in and around the Forest Grove. All of this really exciting work is, I'm sure it will come as no surprise, in the context of some challenges, both at the federal or at the county level, where WCCLS is working with some consultants to look at the structure and governance and the funding of all of the member libraries within that cooperative. There are also, there's a pretty significant budget deficit in Washington County where most of that WCCLS funding comes from. And I should say that the context in which, you know, these changes at county and federal level, which are mentioned, we don't know yet what the impact of those will be. They are all unfolding as we speak, so we're keeping an eye on them. But it's just to let you all know that they're, you know, something that we're watching, but we're unclear what. At the federal level, the Institute of Museum and Library Services is one of the federal institutes that has lost 100% of their staff in recent years and all, if not most of their funding, all of the grants that goes to things like the Oregon State Library, has been paused. There is also, you know, growing national book bans and library defunding circumstances happening in other places. So just being aware of that and it's a real pleasure to get come to you all now to help talk about our library and the really strong love that the community has for it and in appreciation for your all's support of this library. So ways you can help. You can sign up for the library's monthly email newsletter, and I'm going to give you, as soon as I'm done talking, the April events calendar, so you can take a look at that. There's also lots of community opportunities to engage with the Forest Grove Library Foundation and Friends of the Forest Grove Library. Some of those opportunities include volunteering. The foundation is working with volunteers on the garden, for example, to do work and the book sale for the Friends of the Forest Grove Library is taking place May 8. So mark your calendars if you have not already. Also, plan to attend this year's gathering of the groups when we send you all an invitation to come out to meet the commission, the Friends, and the foundation in the library. Hopefully, you all also can connect with your constituents to let them know about library services as needed. For example, the fact that the library has free onsite notary publics, printing, tax forms, all sorts of resources, even above and beyond books, and very helpful librarians to help. And then know that there are policies and support in place to ensure that there is something for everyone in our great library. And if members of the public do have questions about the policy or the collection or just displays in the library, things like that, we are more than happy to talk with them and let them know what the policies are and how we enforce them, how they were created in the first place, and to hear what it is that they're looking for and what they want. So thanks for letting me talk to you and happy to take any questions that you have before I head out.
Okay, Morgan, Colleen, thank you. That was a great presentation. I'll let Counselor, are there any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, let's go with Counselor Martinez and then Counselor Schimmel.
Well, thank you for coming this evening. You have a big job there, definitely. Can you tell me on the book bans, what kind of books are being targeted?
Well, at the Forest Grove Library, nothing recently. We do have a process by which folks can raise concerns and they would talk to Colleen. If they have a more of a concern than Colleen is able to resolve, then their concern would come to us as the commission. And if we are unable to resolve that concern, it would come to you all. So that's kind of the order of operations. Because we're a member of WCCLS in some circumstances, recently where there has been some concerns about services that are provided by WCCLS that we enjoy, our patrons are able to enjoy, we actually are able to connect them directly to WCCLS, who are the folks that are doing some of that purchasing, for example, the Canopy app and things like that that our patrons enjoy.
I do want it does. And I do want to say that I have talked to other people, too, and and they have told me as well that the Forest Grove Library is very diligent about the kind of books that we bring in. So I appreciate that.
And I think that, you know, it's my understanding that the concerns that in recent years, the city libraries are, most of the time, it's things like, we, I don't think that this is filed in the right place. Like this is in the children's area and it belongs in the teen area, things like that, that the librarians are able to assess and work with those folks to make sure that books are in the right place and are, you know, appropriately located with them.
Thank you. Hey, Counselor Schimmel.
I just wanted to say I can identify with your earlier quote, when my my son first started driving, I'd simply tell him, drive to the library, because he absolutely knew where to go. You're the library system and your partners are a model group, so I am honored to be, you know, in the city with you.
Counselor Gustafson.
The last time I was in the library at a PAC meeting, I was looking at all the blank space on the walls. And I was like, oh, my gosh, there's so much blank space for beautiful murals. So I'm glad that that's been started. Are there programs for elders at the library? Are there programs for the elders at our library? Yeah.
No book club or anything like that? Perfect. That was my next comment. So, great, thank you.
And I will say that I'm very excited to think about murals and spaces in the library. But one of the things that we're being, we want to be sensitive to, and is one of the reasons why, as a commission, we're thinking about art, is that a lot of those blank spaces are used by the local elementary schools for their art displays when students make art. So they actually So they actually are used in those contexts. So we're just trying to figure out a line to walk that we have beautiful spaces in the library all the time, but it doesn't take away that very special kind of like gallery space that the library is used for by the students.
Got it, okay. I just saw it on a dead day.
Yeah.
I was actually going to ask that question because I know my son's school uses the library a lot. And then there's like some displays right now, the tiered, from Pacific, right? The tiered books. And I'm really happy about the fireplace area because the EMIAC meets in that area because I think the library foundation meets at the same time. I'm like, hey, do you want me to see if we can rent or we can use the community auditorium? And they're like, no, we love the library. They don't want to leave the library, but I'm like, well, we don't really have a space here. They're like, this is our space. So until Colleen kicks me out, that's where we're hanging out. And then the other thing, just because I have still, we have a few Commission members, you know, we really appreciate the volunteering you do for the community. And so I just want to remind you all that our thank you reception is June 18th. And so we hope you can make it. Like good times, snacks, a drink, you know, we'll hang out. So any other questions, comments?
I just have to say, as a liaison, I am concerned about the deficit of Washington County and how that's going to affect our library. On the other hand, I'm always hopeful because we have wonderful staff, that you do everything possible to create an inclusive place for our community members. And, and that, I appreciate that so much. Like they're going to be celebrating El Dia de los Niños, Children's Day. That's a very Latino celebration, but you know, now it's expanding and we can, all the kids can get to know this holiday as a special day for them. And I'm so glad you're part of that.
I, yeah, I feel such, I feel so thankful to sit on this Commission and get to work so many other folks on the other groups who love libraries. But when it comes down to it, it is Colleen and her staff at the library that really do all the heavy lifting. And they are just such a credit to this town, the folks you have hired and that work in that institution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice night.
Thank you.
Okay, our last presentation in the evening is from our Public Works Director, Gregory Robertson, and he's going to talk about city water and fluoridation.
Good evening, Mayor, Member of the Council. Tonight, I'm going to give you a brief presentation on city water and our practice of fluoridation. I'll give you a little bit of background and history, our budget implications, and then our current practice, which has pretty much remained the same. So the purpose of tonight's discussion is to summarize those elements, but also to respond to some concerns expressed by citizenry about the practice. And so tonight's presentation is just to, to try and elaborate on what we do currently in, in terms of implementing the, the Council's will and desire. So for, for background, fluoridation has been around for a long time. The city of Forest Grove adopted, by resolution, the, the Act of Fluoridation in September of 1952, 10 years before I was born. It's been around a long time, dating myself just a little bit. And we have been fluoridating since, so approximately 73 years. This slide is just to show you the, the actual resolution that was adopted and enacted to direct city staff to, to fluoridate. So in terms of budget impacts, it's relatively small. We spend on average about $26,600 bucks on purchase of the chemical, which is sodium fluoride. And then of that amount, there's a couple thousand that is also used for maintenance of the pumps and the feed station. All expenses are paid through the, the water plant. So what is our current practice? We, we receive water from two sources. One, our wonderful watershed up in the coastal range. And then the other is the Joint Water Commission. And we switch back and forth because our watershed handle for so much time of the year. And sometimes we'll, we'll switch over to Joint Water Commission when we have to take our plant out of service to perform basic maintenance. The water that's received from the watershed as well as Joint Water Commission is untreated for. It's been treated for other purposes such as chlorine. And the, so the city has two chemical feed stations. This is a picture of what one of them looks like. And they are located, one at the, the water treatment plant. And then the other is the Joint Water Commission Point of Entry located over on 10th Avenue and Elm Street. There's a small demure building at the end of the cul-de-sac on 10th. That is the, is that entry point. The feed stations that are employed are monitored in real time, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We employ a system called SCADA, Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition System, which is basically a digital eyes and ears of the water treatment plant operators. And it consistently and continually monitors all metrics of the system to make sure that it's functioning accordingly in compliance with the permit. And the, if, if an alert is received where one of these metrics goes outside parameters of what we set, an alarm is, is sent to the water treatment plant operator who can manipulate the plant and its controls with a tablet anywhere they're at. So if they're at home or they're on vacation, doesn't matter, they, they can manipulate that plant or they can diagnose the problem remotely and decide whether they need to whatever is, whatever is malfunctioning. The delivery is, as I said, is in real time and the systems are tested daily by certified water treatment plant operators to make sure that they are functioning properly. And the test results and additional water samples are sent to OHA or the Oregon Health Authority for compliance and validation on, all consistent with our, our permit. The city's target fluoridation level is 0.7 milligrams per liter. That is the recommendation of the Department of Health and Human Services and is the standard for those water systems that fluoridate in the state of Oregon. Plans, equipment, instrumentation, and even the qualifications of the certified operator are required to be approved by the Oregon Health Authority before, before we can. So if we make any change to the system of significance, we have to go through them to get, gain their approval. In the state of Oregon, there's approximately 25% of public water supply systems that fluoridate. Nationally, however, that number is higher. It's, it's roughly about three quarters of the water systems nationally that, that fluoridate. There is additional information, a lot of it available through the CDC or Center for Disease Control. If you Google my water, my fluoridated water, MFW, you can get an interactive map and see by county, anywhere in the country, who does, who doesn't. That is my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
Counselor Martinez.
I guess my biggest question is, if the Council is agreeable, how do we get rid of the fluoridation? How do we stop fluoridating our water?
It's actually very easy to do. Full plug. And the, the, obviously the, the chemical feed stations will need to be removed from the treatment chain and the, the chemical properly.
I think on a process level, there would need to be during Council of Communication, like a motion for a work session, right? Or something. Will city staff please help me articulate the?
Yeah, from a process perspective, if the Council did want to essentially undo the resolution that was previously passed that called for the administration of fluoride, it would have to essentially repeal that resolution and do something different. If the Council would like to consider that, yes, Mayor, it would require some form of process. I think the Council can talk about that, but generally that includes a work session.
During Council, because we already passed additions and deletions, so during your Council comments, you could, no, during this meeting, during, there's two opportunities, I believe, to get consensus for a work session, correct? During additions, deletions, or during Council comments?
Correct. So during Council comments tonight, you could ask for a motion.
Am I giving accurate? Okay. Council, Council President Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor. So let me ask you a question, please. You said that everything needs to be approved by the OHA, correct? The process having the fluoride in the?
I think if you are implementing fluoride or introducing it into a water treatment chain, then yes, it needs to be approved. Removal of it, it does not.
Okay. Do you know if OHA has done any studies of how fluoride has affected people?
Honestly, I cannot tell you. I mean, I can, I can do the, the reading online like everybody else can, but I'm not a, a health professional. Your staff are implementers. And we're technicians and engineers and our job is to implement policy. And that's what we do. The debate of health benefits or disbenefits is not something I'm qualified to talk about.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I mean to, I'm not a professional either, okay? Nor in engineering or anything like that, or in health and science. I'm not. So I have to ask those questions to see who has the data and the information so I can support my community. And, you know, if I hear concerns about fluoride in water, I want to know the validity of the concerns. That's, that's all I'm saying.
It may be worthwhile to invite public health professionals that are skilled and deal with this sort of thing and can really talk more intelligently about the, the health benefits or disbenefits
Yes.
of adding fluoride to water.
Counselor Gufferson.
My apologies if you already answered this. Do we have natural fluoride already in our water and how often is the water tested?
The water is tested daily. And nationally speaking, fluoride actually appears in most surface water, groundwater. It's contained in aggregate. And some, some places, there's a lot of fluoride. And some plants, they de, or remove fluoride from, from the supply because there's so much.
I know in Asia, there's
Right.
an abundance.
Yeah. So, yeah, to answer your question, yeah.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, seeing, I don't see any additional questions. Thank you. Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to our next agenda item, which is public hearings, ordinances, and resolutions. We're only 20 minutes behind schedule. That's not too bad. We started 10 minutes late, so. Resolution 202515, appointing the city auditor for the fiscal year ending in June 30th, 2025, through the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2027. Hello, Paul?
Hey, that magic audit word and everybody runs through the door.
I was going to say, yeah, right?
Hey, Council Mayor, this is a resolution staffer question. You reappoint the current auditors for another three-year term. At the beginning of the term, it was Polly Rogers. And in the last of the three, current three-year audit cycle, they, the firm divided and, and people that do municipal auditing formed their own firm called Clear Lake Auditor, Clear Trails Auditors. And we went with Clear Trails since they, they were the only ones that did municipal auditing. But we're recommending that they be appointed for another three-year term. It's not uncommon that we get, as an end of a three-year, first three-year term, to appoint somebody, appoint the current firm to another two or three-year term. Most, a lot of cities will do that. Additionally, it's getting harder to find qualified municipal auditors because some of the larger firms have stopped doing municipal audits and some of the other municipal firms are, are having trouble hiring staff. And so they've cut back on the number of their auditors. And that's how we, before Polly Rogers, that's how we lost our last two auditors is they were cutting back. And we were one of their more costly audits because they had to travel. So when they were reducing clients, they reduced us so they could save themselves some money, so. The NYSE, and Clear Trails has done, has done a very good job for us. And you appoint them, they work for you. And so I, I know one of the questions, one of the Councils has, what about independence? Well, there's professional standards they have to adhere to for independence. And if they, and they also have to report to the City Council if they feel that during the audit, the staff's done anything to try to hinder their independence. So that's one of the, that's one of the things they are required to do for you. And also the fees, fees are still reasonable. In fact, the fee for the first year is actually less than the fee that we're, $2,000 less than what we're paying current year. I think when being their own firm, municipal auditors have a different overhead and they also give us a little bit of a current client discount. So they're trying to, you know, get other clients, but also trying to keep the ones that they have. So there's a little, we're a little lower the first year. The second year is actually still a little lower and the third year will be just slightly higher than the fee for this last year. So we're recommending that you appoint the, appoint them for a, you know, the three-year term. And this, this staff board also kind of takes care of the URA audit appointment when we get to that. So don't have to go through this report again. I would say the same things all over. Any questions you have?
Yeah, any questions? Counselor Schimmel.
Yeah, just in light of the Clean Water Services situation, how, how does that inform the, the audit oversight?
Audits aren't really, audits aren't really designed to, how can I say this nicely? On my own opinion, audits are designed to determine if the financial, if the financial statements fairly reflect the, you know, the financial picture of the city. They're not designed, I mean, if I was doing an audit and I looked at that for Clean Water Services, I would probably say those expenses fairly present. Now, whether, whether from an appropriate public viewpoint, those expenses should have been incurred or not is another thing. That's a different type of audit or a different type of review if you want to look at the appropriateness of the expense from a, say from the rate payers or the, or the board's view. It's not really the financial auditors. Financial auditors will look at things and I can guarantee you that you're not going to find any of that here. It's, I mean, if you looked at my business meal expenses for the past two years, about all you would see is chamber lunches, so.
Any other questions? Okay, what is the wish of the Council?
I move to approve Resolution 2025-15, second.
Okay, Resolution 2025-15 was Okay, uh, resolution 2025-15 was moved by Counselor Gustafson and seconded by Council President Valenzuela. Will the city manager please read it by title only?
Resolution 2025-15, approving the city auditor for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025 through the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2027.
Okay, discussion by council? No discussion. Can we have a roll call vote though, please, Maria? Thank you.
Counselor Marshall?
Yes.
Counselor Gustafson?
Yes.
Counselor Valenzuela?
Yes.
Counselor Schimmel?
Yes.
Counselor Falconer?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes. And a vote of seven to zero, resolution 2025-15 is approved by the Forest Grove City Council.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay, and we have an added agenda item, F2, travel letter, and I'm going to turn it over to Counselor Gustafson.
Um, I handed you both a, kind of a context for verification of a letter request, including a draft of a letter. Um, I'm going to be traveling to Jordan and Qatar in a couple weeks and it, it is kind of last minute. Um, and I'll be going in part for economic development conversations, civic engagement, and international partnership building. Um, and this is a final council meeting before I'm leaving. Um, normally in, in these diplomatic and professional, um, out of country meetings, it's, it's expected to have some sort of formal document that verifies I am who I say I am, because of course, anybody can make a business card. Um, there's also the two nationally elected leadership roles that I hold with the N L C, which will also help clarify, um, the full scope of my roles and will elevate that credibility, um, of my participation over in the Middle East. Uh, this isn't a request for endorsement at all and/or financial support. All of that's taken care of. Uh, it's just verification of my elected and appointed positions.
I have a couple of questions. Who invited you or who, like, how is this trip? Is this an invitation?
How did this happen?
I'm just wondering because you're like, you're saying I'm going to speak on this. So I'm trying to figure out if like a federal, like, who invited, is this a, I guess, is this a personal trip?
It's a personal trip that I'm taking advantage of. So instead of vacationing the whole time, um, I've decided to, because I like to engage with women's groups, um, when I go different places, right? So I sent emails to women's groups and other, uh, farming groups and have been invited to speak to the Ministry of Agriculture and several other groups there, um, because they want to discuss, uh, relationships here. For instance, they have a revitalization program, not unlike the Main Street program, and they have, um, trade programs similar to, to Oregon. Um, I will be bringing Oregon hazelnuts with me because they don't have anything like that. So this will be kind of that connecting relationship. And, uh, just for the personal connection, it's Sierra's mother-in-law. Her and I are very good friends and she travels to the Middle East all the time. Um, she's helping me make these connections because she's an international, um, relations person.
And in the letter, and you just mentioned your N L C, uh, appointments, did you get a letter from the N L C?
Yes, I got two of them and I'm already participating in those.
Yeah. So in our letter, we don't really need, because for me, like, I don't, there's some things I would probably leave out, but I don't feel like that's not our, like, we're the Forest Grove City Council. So like affirming, so I would probably cross out in addition to a role, like the paragraphs from addition to a role as a local elected, and it talks about your N L C appointments. And then, you know, down here, like, I would also go all the way down to economic development because while I understand, like, as an individual councillor, like, I think it's great, but we haven't had a work session or endorsed any of these conversations. So for me, I don't feel comfortable. I think that's out of our scope in a, in a short, uh, and I understand you're in a time crunch, but my understanding is, you know, I'm, I'm fine affirming your, I mean, just me, myself, open for discussion, but for, you know, the first sentence affirming you as a city councillor, and then this letter is solely for the purpose of verifying Counselor Gustafson's current elected status, does not, you know, constitute endorsement of specific activity statements, representations, nor does it imply any official delegation. This letter is offered in formal verification, but those would be the three paragraphs I'm okay with. Uh, and then Counselor Falconer.
I had, I had a suggestion for an edit.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because I, I have similar concerns about listing the things that aren't city committees or city assignments.
Sure.
You know, we are all, we have, we've, we're, we all have assignments for either city boards and commissions or regional ones, but they're, they're the ones that we established and we agreed to. And so I had a suggestion to change the second paragraph to, as a member of the city council, Counselor Gustafson served on council liaison positions on the follow-up city assignments. And so just.
That makes sense.
List our city ones.
Sure.
And then, and, and then skipping then down to this letter.
I would agree with that.
I think we could even leave in the Counselor Gustafson's leadership and public service reflects a strong commitment to advancing civic innovation, community development, and regional collaboration, because I think that would match the, if we made the, only if we had made the addition though, of, you know, if we made the change.
No, that makes, that makes perfect sense. I can use the two acceptance letters from the N L C to cover that part. And, and really this is about, this isn't an endorsement at all. Um, this is just basically saying who, you know, you verify I am, who you, who I am. And, um, getting council support as far as, as a claim of, you know, I don't stink as a councillor, you are supportive of how I work. Um, I think that's very important and I think we all need to, to support each other in these endeavors because this could be extremely impactful for Forest Grove in a very positive way.
Yeah, I think so. Change, making those changes, leaving, then if we, if, if you're amenable to that, so changing the N L C stuff to city stuff, leaving in the count, that, that sentence directly after that, but then striking, we understand because I don't think we.
Is, is somebody tracking this? Because mayor, I just, this is a draft and so I figured it would be modified.
Do you want to see my edit?
Yeah.
Uh, what, what, go ahead, Jesse.
I was gonna say, when the deliberation is done, I can summarize what I think the consensus to be, because staff will ultimately have to draft the letter. So just to get clarity on what it would say.
Uh, Counselor Schimmel.
Counselor Schimmel, I didn't know if I spoke in the microphone.
I'm, I'm surprised about the letter at all, uh, given that the county certifies elections. Uh, you, you have a certification from the county that affirms your office, not, the council doesn't affirm your office, so, but the, the county does. Do you have that?
Hmm, I do. But this is, this is my council and this is my city. So this is, this is a, a piece of, of affirming that, that I am who I say I am and, and I work in the city from my city council, not from the county.
Yeah. Well, my general concern is that in, uh, I, I might have been okay up to the point where you seem to imply that I, I might be agreeable to your point of views and I, I can agree to that. Yes, we work on the same council. We don't always agree with each other. I don't know what you're gonna say or imply about. And, and I'm not, I'm not convinced that, and how Forest Grove benefit from your presence there. I think the most relevant, um, way to certify your position is by the Washington County Office or Elections Office. That's, that's the formal thing is, I mean, frankly, the, the city council doesn't affirm you as a councillor, the, the Elections Office does. So it seems like this, anyone can doctor up the letter, but they can't doctor up an election certification. That seems to be the relevant.
I'm not requesting it from them. I'm requesting it from this council.
It would just be more formal, you know?
Exactly. But, but this is the council I'm requesting it from. And I'm not sure why it's, it's, it's difficult to agree to verify a sitting councillor's title by her own council or an international engagement, just validating that she is who she says she is. And it reflects really poorly if there's hesitation on validating that, that, that position. I mean, if, if.
I disagree. I'm telling you where you get the certification from, not, I don't, I don't agree that it's from.
Listen, I think this is part of policy work. This is part of being on council is to have sometimes difficult conversations like this. What I am hearing, I think each of you have valid points, right? So just to paraphrase, there is a concern that a letter might give you the idea that you can speak and say like, hey, my council wrote this letter. We can speak on behalf of the council, or I'm here because the council sent me, which is not exactly the case. And we haven't had a work session. And I understand what you're saying, Counselor Gustafson, that you want to be able to say like, hey, I'm who I say I am. So these are the forms and the verification, whether it's certification, your business card, this letter. But I don't think either of you is wrong. I think that that's, I mean, that's a concern. Like, that's why we're having this discussion. So I think that's how we get to a place where we can hopefully come out with something that, a consensus that we can all feel comfortable with. I mean, I think that's my goal.
I think the edits are great.
I think the one thing that the certification from the Elections Office does not do is that it doesn't address the council liaison appointments. And so that was my edit.
What are your?
Just, is it just Public Arts Commission or is there something?
No, I have.
Do you have water? I think there's a water.
Are you on public safety?
Regional.
Public Arts, Regional Water Providers Consortium.
That's what it was.
Um, Washington County Consolidated Communications Agency and TV Highway Steering Committee.
Are you on steering? You are on the steering committee?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And then I, you know, a whole bunch of other things that aren't.
Like, I need a report on that today, uh, during council communication about that TV highway. I've been hearing about it a lot.
I'm, I'm an alternate on that.
Oh, so you're not?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I, yeah, I mean the main.
Sorry, yeah.
Yeah, the main one's not alternate. Like, you're, we're only gonna put the main, your main, uh, your main assignment, not alternate.
And there is a, a line down there that specifies, I think, at the bottom. This letter is provided solely for the purpose of verifying Counselor Gustafson's current elected status. It does not constitute endorsement, statements, or representation. I, I put that in here because I understood that it would be a question. So I wanted to make sure that the council was covered. Um, and I do understand process and procedure and what I am allowed to do and not allowed to do. I'm not there representing the council.
Right. And we don't, I mean, like, and I don't, but we also don't have, have never had any conversation, right, about partnerships, about any, so, I mean, I get it. Like, when I go someplace and I travel, I'm like, hey, this is a great idea. So I might say, I mean, there's like this, there's this line, right, of saying like, yeah, I think this is a great idea. I'm gonna bring it back to my council. And like, that's appropriate. But like saying, hey, we're gonna reach out to you and we're gonna, you know, look into that. Like, that's where the line crosses, right? Because you don't know for sure we're gonna look into it. You just know that you're gonna bring it back. You see what I'm saying? Like, I just want to be really clear.
I, I will of course bring it back, but this isn't about a partnership directly with the city. This is about a partnership with farmers. This is about a partnership with Rachel and her, her group with domestic violence. This is about partnership with Adelante Mujeres, with the women's groups in this area, about with agriculture, because I have an appointment with the Ministry of Agriculture. These are the, the partnerships.
Well, I would say it's the networking you're trying to connect, because you don't know if, I'm like, playing the, you don't know if they want to partner. You don't know if Adelante, you don't know if, you know, the family justice.
I've been invited to meetings, but maybe nothing will happen.
Right. So that's what I'm saying. Like, I don't want you to go as a Forest Grove City councillor and make these things. And then I have other agencies coming and saying, hey, like, your council went and did this and now, you know, our workload and our work plan's already this. You see what I'm saying? Like, I'm not trying, but so it's like, hey, I can network you, I can connect you, but you can't guarantee that those other agencies are gonna want to work with them. You look at me like frustrated and I'm not trying to frustrate you.
I'm trying to figure out what you just said.
Well, you just said that it's not about partnerships with the city. It's about partnerships with Adelante, with the Family Justice Center. But again, I'm saying you can't speak for those groups.
No, but I can find out what they have there and then speak with those groups and say, hey, look what I found out. And I'm sorry, but the Filbert Farms and the Oregon Hazel Net Organization is really excited about this trip because they, they're interested in those sort of partnerships. So like, like I said, this is just a letter verifying that yes, I am a city councillor. I work, you know, here in Forest Grove. I'm a resident. You know, that's all this is. And this is what I'm requesting. I would love if council would do that and support it. It's letterhead, it's official that way. You get taken a little bit more seriously. And if council will agree, I would be very happy and it will help. And that's, that's support. And.
So where we are right now is, you want, you want me to read it where we're at and then offer suggestions or how you guys feel about it? To whom it may concern, on behalf of the city of Forest Grove, we affirm that Counselor Don Augustus currently serves as a duly elected member of the Forest Grove City Council. As a member of the city council, she, like, serves, wait, as a member of the city council, serves on council liaison positions, Public Arts Commission, and Regional Water Consortium.
Well, there was the one that you do. It was just a, I'm just an alternate.
Oh, yeah. Counselor Gustafson's leadership and public service reflects a strong commitment to advancing civic innovation, community development, and regional collaboration. This letter is to provide solely for the purpose of verifying Counselor Gustafson's current elected status. It does not constitute endorsement of specific activity statements or representations, nor does it imply any official delegation or responsibility on behalf of the city of Forest Grove. This letter is offered as a formal verification of her current titles and responsibilities, and we extend our support for her continued service in both local and national leadership capacities. I think we need to cross out the national leadership capacities because we took out the national.
Oh, yeah. Yep. Go ahead.
Right. So serves in both, in continued service in local leadership capacities.
And any other feedback?
That's good.
I'll just use the N L C for their stuff.
For their, yeah.
I feel like if it, if, if we treat it like somebody's talking, somebody from council's talking to the media, where you, you don't referring to everything you're doing as you're on, you're, you're Counselor Gustafson, you're not speaking on behalf of the council.
Yep.
And that's, that's how I feel like this is being treated. It would be that same thing with the revisions that are made. I, I think that would be, I, I think would be okay to do.
I mean, we are, I've been told so many times, you are a councillor 100% of the time. So this is, this is really no different than that.
Yeah. I think we all go as a councillor, but like adding a lot, like when there's nuances in a letter.
I totally get it. And this is, this is different.
I go as a councillor and travel all the time and I just say, hey, yeah, or as a mayor. I'm like, yeah, I'm the mayor. I think this is really cool. This is whatever. But I don't ask my council to. So this is.
I knew this was an odd and probably never been asked for before. So I understood there would probably be some conversation.
So then I'm gonna ask you, like, on your signature line, you're saying you're a municipal delegate.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that, where did you get that title from?
That's what all of us are.
Who are all of us?
City councillors.
Municipal delegates.
Mm-hmm. But that would be when we are traveling, for example, to, uh, when we went to DC because we are a delegation from the city for a specific purpose in DC, in this case. It could be Bend, Oregon. It could be anything. Then we are a delegation that goes for that purpose. But if you're going to explore partnerships to Jordan, to Qatar, for example, uh,
Yeah, you're not.
You know, for whatever benefit that may bring to Forest Grove, to Adelante Mujeres. Um, I don't know, uh, what the future awaits, you know, in that area. Uh, and, you know, thinking about possibility of partnerships, uh, but a delegation is representing, you know, is representing the city, in this case, Forest Grove. So municipal delegate. We are sending you to explore this, uh, partnerships.
That's what I imply. And we didn't, we didn't do that, right, in this. So, you know, when you have your title of like city councillor, city club president, and then municipal delegate, I think it's really misleading, like the city, again, you know, the city is sending you and you're working on behalf of the city, which we didn't really do.
But that's a title. I'm not, I'm not going there representing the city.
No, but the title implies something.
But the title, but when you say a title that you. But the title, but when you say a title that you got elected to, and then a title you were appointed to, and then this third title, like, I don't, like, it seems like you appointed yourself as our municipal delegate without the consensus of the council.
Because we had no idea about, we haven't talked about this trip, where you're going, the itinerary in terms of what you're going to be doing, the activities. So it's very foreign to us. You know what I mean? It's very foreign to us. When we go to DC, we know exactly what we're going to be doing, you know, on behalf of the city. We're representing Forest Grove. But in this case, we don't know what Adelante Mujeres is doing, trying to reach out to Qatar, or, you know, the hazelnuts, you know, going over there. Eh, I, I don't know.
I, I, I just am, it gives me like great discomfort when the, it's perceived, I mean, when you put, I mean, when it's a mixed bag of titles, like, you are elected, you were elected, you earned that title. You were appointed city club president. And then this, I don't know what the first one was, and then municipal del, I mean, municipal delegate stood out to me because I was like, wait, the coun, municipalities are Forest Grove, they're cities. And none of us ever had that conversation. And so then it felt, so then I was like, okay, it's self-appointed. But the fact that it's self-appointed with earned titles makes it really misleading to the public. And I think it takes advantage of our council a little bit.
So are, are we not municipal diplomats? Because that's, oh, I've been referred in the past.
Never been referred.
I've never been referred.
Maybe, maybe take that out. Maybe only say what she does here. We are affirming her position here, but she is not there representing our city. I mean.
It's on her, it's on her email signature line right now, everybody.
What they're doing is they're, they have an issue with what I put on my own signature line.
No, I know.
My own signature line.
Your own city what?
City councillor.
Yeah.
That's city councillors on there.
That's, that's it. City councillors for City Forest Grove. Yeah. But municipal delegate, that means that wherever we go, you know, if I go to Hawaii, for example, or I go to Chile to visit my family, I would be a municipal delegate. No, I wouldn't. Because you guys haven't sent me over there to do any assignments, to do any tasks, to explore any partnerships. You know what I mean? That's.
The, 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 um, definition is, is not what I, I see, but, um, but if you want to take it off, take it off.
Mayor, I mean, I think.
Is that on there? But that, that's my signature line personally. So I'm not sure. It's not on the letter.
All right, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just, I mean, the word delegate, I mean, it, it, it does infer delegation of some sort. And, and municipal delegate infers that this, the municipality of the City of Forest Grove has, that, that you are a delegate, that you're a delegate, that that's been delegated. So I do understand the reservation around using that. I think we all use city councillor or mayor.
Yeah.
In our signature line, and I think that that's entirely appropriate.
But, well, and I, and I apologize because I kind of got off on a tangent. Um, so let's, this is about the letter. So let's do a roll call vote about the letter. Uh, wait, we lost.
Lost her.
Sorry, she needed a drink of water. So let's pause on that council vote. And then we have, do you, yeah, I'm like.
When, when is the, I'm supposed to.
Yeah.
Now?
No, no, during council communications.
Okay.
So I'm going to probably ask, like, okay, I don't know. Because we have an URA work session after this.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Make it quick.
Okay. I'll make, try to make my, okay, thank you. Sorry, Council President. No, your throat. Okay, so we'll, what is this? So when I, we don't have a, a resolution number or anything. So I just say item F two when I announce the vote.
I think, I.
I think we would need a motion to, um, I don't think there's been a motion, an actual motion yet to like approve, the same you would with a resolution, like I.
I know, but would I just say F two instead of a resolution number? Because we don't have a resolution number. It's item F two.
We can say that, or move to approve, um, uh, authorizing the mayor to sign a letter.
I'll figure it out. I'll, in my exhaustion, figure it out. Okay, so may we please get a roll call vote on the amended letter that I'll turn over to city staff?
So I think we need a, a motion.
Oh, we need a motion.
There was a motion to add it to the agenda.
I'll move that we approve a letter for the, for the mayor to sign a letter. Um, or I'm, we, uh, sorry, I'm also getting untied and exhausted.
Rummy.
I move to approve a letter, um, for the, for the mayor to sign.
I second.
Okay. It was moved by Council Falconer and seconded by Council Martinez for the City Council to approve a verification letter for Council Guff, Council Gustafson. Um, well, there's no title only. So, oh, we already had discussion. Can I just do a vote?
Yes.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote.
Councilor Martinez?
Yes.
Councilor Marshall?
Yes.
Councilor Gustafson?
Abstain.
Councilor Valenzuela?
Abstain.
Councilor Schimmel?
No.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes.
Uh, Councilor Falconer?
Yeah.
The vote is four yeses, two abstention, wait, four yeses, one no, two abstentions. And it is approved by the Forest Grove City Council. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to councillor commune, councillor reports. I would just ask that we say like one or two things uh, to expedite the process, but we do need to have reports. We haven't met in a month. Our last meeting was March seventeenth. So pick one or two things from your report and report out. And we're going to start on, Councilor Gustafson's been talking a lot. So we're going to start on the opposite end and move this way. Going to give you a break. So we're going to start with Councilor Marshall and go this way. So a little bit of a break.
I don't even know if I did this one last time. Um, when was our last meeting?
March seventeenth.
Seventeenth, okay. So, um, they've moved to, uh, Parks and Rec moved to, um, send council their final decision on the rental for us to basically make the decision on the rental fees. Um, they agreed on everything else. They'll be bringing that to us. Um, I'm not sure if I put it in there last time that we, they're putting lights at the Nam's Fields. Um, east side was, um, actually that, I don't even know where I'm at now. Hold on a second. Uh, oh, it was rescheduled to open on June third. Everything looks like it's on track. Rec program is starting up in spring. Yeah, twenty kids signed up for, for that, or they had twenty kids over spring break. Planning in a house aquatic rec program camp coming up. And when the aquatic center opens back up, um, May third, rec kickoff, Rogers Park Flyers will start going, uh, getting out and being published. That's what I have for that. And then forestry, they just did their thing.
Okay, and then I have, um, from the Rural Fire Department. Um, we have a new engine that should be here and equipment, um, applied to it. So we should have it in operation in May. Um, or it'll just be here in May and then they'll, they have to get all the equipment on it and get it specialized. We had a hundred and eight applications for fire department openings, which was phenomenal. We're excited about that. And then, uh, nurse navigation, um, it's a nurse who will assess the patient's, the caller's condition and their best location. Um, they elevated one call on the first day.
Excited about that.
Oh, and then we want, I want to move that we, um, have a work session on fluorid, uh, taking fluoridation out of our water potentially.
Can I just ask if there's a consensus to do that? Or do we need to do a second and then a vote?
So if you'd like to hold a work session, I would recommend a motion, a second. Discussion about kind of the scope of the work session. And then if there's a time certain that you'd like to select, that would be good. Otherwise, staff could come up with the time.
Okay. So there's a motion by Councilor Martinez that they're second.
I'd second.
Okay, so moved by Councilor Martinez, seconded by Councilor Marshall. I'll open for discussion to determine the scope. So I heard Council, Council President Valenzuela said you want to know the health implications of without fluoride or with fluoride? Like, what are the?
All right. So I just, eh, actually, eh, there's a lot of information. Eh, Job Hopkins, for example, has done research. And now that I, you know, had the opportunity to read a little bit, the first paragraph about that. And now I understand where this is coming from. So I think we need to come to the table well informed when we do this. Because suddenly out of the blue, we started to get these emails about fluoride water. I remember when I lived in Idaho and my children's pediatrician told me, you're going to like Oregon. They have much better water than we do because it has fluoride. That was, eh, you know, eh, very experienced doctor. Eh, so I came here thinking that that was a positive thing, okay? Eh, and now I'm reading, eh, this article. I think we need to really, eh, look for the right information. Eh, and to come here, eh, really well informed about this fluoride eh, in the water and how it's actually affecting or not.
Okay, so.
So, that's all I ask of my colleagues, that you do your reading and come prepared.
I would just think that we would need the, some information about the health implications, like maybe also saying what, um, jurisdictions around our area are doing. And then our options for repeal, like, if to repeal, it's not repeal, and then kind of like tapering it off, like what's the, is that an okay scope?
I, I think this, I would, would prefer a scope in terms of what re, what, what regional jurisdictions are doing. I would actually prefer a scope that was wider than that. I think some of the numbers that we heard today verify my own personal lived experience, which was I came from a state where fluoridation was very, was, was very common. And in Oregon, it's actually not very. And the very first thing, my very first dentist appointment when I moved to Oregon, my dentist said, you're not from around here because your teeth are so good. And I think that that's, so I think there needs to be a lot of information gathered before we have a work session. And I'm not entirely sure that our staff isn't, our staff wasn't prepared to answer some of those questions. And I want to make darn sure that we, we get people in here who are representative of, of, of the dentistry profession and health professionals and not just advocates for taking fluoride out of the water or advocates for leaving. I think it's really important that we have sound science in this conversation if we're going to have it at all.
And there is wide variety on that, even in those practices. So. But yeah, we need to just move on and discuss it when we have the work session.
Or, yeah.
So, may, maybe more topic about the science behind it and the health, like, implications. And that's it.
I think, I think that's enough. Yeah.
Okay. Cool. Thanks. Okay, moving on.
Have we actually voted to?
Oh, did we vote?
We have not voted.
All those in favor of having this work session, say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Okay, so, who knows? Okay, so we're going to go ahead and have it. There's five, five to two. Okay. Thank you. Awesome. Okay, it's your turn to.
Oh, it's my, I'm going to go real fast. I had a bunch of, um, meetings, joint water orientation, fire department orientation, parks orientation. Um, and then we've got joint water commission coming up on Friday, so I'll have a report later this month.
Okay. Councilor Schimmel?
Uh, I would say my, my daughter sends her regrets. She couldn't be here. Apparently it wasn't on her calendar. Normally she would be here. Uh, uh, of course, over the last month, you know, our boards of commission has met, but there's, because there's nothing of significance to relay. And we'll probably be talking about twenty forty stuff at another time, so.
All right. Council President Valenzuela?
All right. So April thirtieth at the library, the Adelante Niños Children's Day, a lot of activities, fun activities in English and Spanish. Festival of the Arts, eh, eh, that's eh, from the Public Arts Commission. So you're probably going to discuss that a little bit more, but it's going to be, um, on the first farmer's market of each month. Each Wednesday, first farmer's market of each month. That's when they're going to have the festival of, Festival of Arts. Another, I'm trying to go through this to the important things, book sale, May eighth through the tenth, they will need volunteers on the eleventh and the twelfth to pack up the books that were left over and that sort of thing. Eh, so on the west entrance, eh, like you were told in the presentation a little bit about that, so I'll go ahead and skip that. Eh, the budget from the library was submitted to the city for, for us to do eh, our budget. Eh, so of course, everything is uncertain, so we just have to work with the numbers, you know, eh, whatever we feel that we may need. Um, let's see, what else? What else? What else? All right. And then the city and Adelante Mujeres agreed to expand the space for the stage, eh, located next to the Public Arts Commission booth. So they're going to be part of that eh, as well. And I think that's all, because I just got really scrambled here with this. Oh, friends, request for read for a cause. So this year it's going to benefit Adventures Without Limits. And they're going to be specifically for the Adelante Chicas group to go on different field trips out in nature.
That's great. That's two groups. That's two organizations, not one.
Yeah. Yeah. So that's going to be eh, from the front of the library. That's what they're going to be reading. Eh, fundraising for that purpose. All right. So that's, that's it.
Thank you, Council President. Council Gustafson?
So, um, you stole all my thunder.
I am so sorry. Oh, my gosh.
It's fine. No, it's, it's small because it happened last year, but it is expanding. So it, it did really well last year, the Festival of the Arts. So we're all very happy. We're all very glad that it's expanding. And I can't wait to, um, to see it, especially the stage because everybody was kind of set back and nobody could really see the musicians. So, but thank you for doing that because now I have two more I can do. Um, so I, I would like to start out with saying this is nonpartisan, although it might feel partisan. Um, I would like the council just to chew on this for a while, um, and consider drafting a formal letter to, um, Senators Merkley and Wyden um, to address the, the, the issues, um, that the administration at the federal level are changing that, um, are affecting us downstream. Um, veterans benefits, healthcare, which I, I know personally is really hitting home because, um, everybody I work with is getting laid off. Um, public education, um, the climate with, with the climate resilience grants. We've got the wildfires that have been happening more often here. So I think a letter from council, um, Merkley and Wyden both are saying, just keep those letters coming. It does help. And I think a formal letter from council would be a great way for us to also tell the community we do want to protect our resources here. So that's just something to consider, um, although I know it's, um, it's a lot, um, a lot of information to kind of weed through and decide if that's the way everybody wants to go. I continue to write letters on a weekly basis, but I'm sure that all of us have our piece that we are doing. Um, and there's a number of people at the protests that have mentioned that to me as well. Um, and the next part, um, is just something I've been thinking about a lot lately. And I want, I want everybody to understand that this applies to me as well as the world. Um, none of us truly know what's in each other's hearts. Nobody knows what's in my heart. I don't know what's in your heart. And we all come here with different experiences and pressures and intentions. We're here for our own reasons. Um, and it's really dangerous to make assumptions about other people's motives. Um, when we let those assumptions take root, they damage our relationships. And, and our relationships can be really difficult to hold on to because, you know, we argue because we're, we're, you know, we're debating, right? That's our job is to debate. And that ability to work together in a healthy, productive way is very important. And the, the division doesn't just affect us, it affects how the public sees us and the outcomes. I think that, I think I need to try harder. Um, but I think leading with respect and I always like to use the term that I learned from healthcare is assuming positive intent. I always try to remind myself that because the first assumption that people make are, you know, what are they, what are they trying to do? And then I have to remember, always think positive intent first. So this is, this is my thing I need to keep doing. And I'm just asking everybody to consider our relationship on council because it affects the community too. That's my second thing.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, great, thank you. City managers, report.
I'll try to be quick. Just a friendly reminder, tomorrow night is the Budget Committee, and it's at Light and Power at 6:00 PM. Change in venue, Light and Power, so please remember that. We did order new microphones to help establish a works, a work session environment down here. Those microphones are going to come in tomorrow. We'll start testing them, hopefully they'll be up and running before the next meeting. But we've got to make sure they're compatible, but we have moved forward on that. The Glow Up Project construction will start on that next Monday. You may see some advanced construction from our own Light and Power crew in advance of that, but the project in earnest will get started next Monday. We are outreach to businesses and doing some social media posts, et cetera. We have signed a project agreement for the U Street intersection with ODOT obligating the $850,000 that was a congressional directed spending request that was from Congresswoman Bonamichi. So signing that agreement with ODOT also bumped that project up into the 2427 stip as opposed to the 2628 stip. So we've gained some time back on that, and those funds are obligated now. We also signed a grant agreement with Mountain View and TV Highway, that Safe Routes to School project. That was a $1.435 million grant. We do have to work with the railroad on that, negotiations have started, but that money has also been obligated. And then last but not least, we also signed a grant agreement with the Oregon Department of Energy authorizing the expenditure of $438,000 in state grant money for energy resilience. This was burying the under, burying the overhead lines underground in areas that have a high prone to wildfire. So that concludes my report, thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. I have a lot, but I'm gonna try to keep it down. So there was over 3,400 bills brought to the long session for the Oregon State Legislature. They're about halfway through, they've, were able to weed out and get down to 1,760. There's some key housing bills about middle housing infrastructure, but then also the transportation package is really big and really important. And so if there's any sort, you know, in public testimony, speaking of writing letters, public testimony in support of funding transportation, right now, there's, you know, some, some money, but basically not enough. And some of those revenue generators are like scaffolding in, staging in over four or five years. So it's, it's not the best case, but I won't talk about transportation too long. So we all probably heard about the allegations of misappropriation of CWS, like public dollars in CWS. So the county commissioners are doing an audit. There's a number of kind of guardrails they've put in place. I think, you know, a message, I understand the frustration. And I've been speaking with some county representatives, but I think, you know, there's a process that has to go through the county, the board, the commissioners trying to do. But it also is separate from, you know, the things that we do as a council, right? We still, we are very fiscally responsible, we are, you know, we are responsible, we do need a police station. And so this messaging of like, see, this is why you don't trust government, this is why, this is really dangerous for our city. It's also dangerous for the county, because the county has a library and we are reliant on that library levy passing and the public safety of keeping people in jail when our police officers drop them off. Just kind of keep those things in mind. The Habitat for Humanity fundraiser is April 26th. A Chamber Dual City Update with Cornelius Meyer and myself is the 28th. Make sure to come to the June 18th Board and Commission Thank You Reception at Waltzbury. Those are my things. Okay, I'm gonna adjourn this meeting, but ask that we stay, or do we need a bio break? Okay, can we stay and hammer out the URA meeting? Okay, meeting. Like to call to order this meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency Board. The time is 9:24, and will our city recorder call or roll?
Director Gustafson?
Here.
Director Valenzuela?
Here.
Director Schimmel?
Here.
Director Falconer?
Here.
Director Martinez?
Here.
Director Marshall?
Here.
Chair Wenzel?
Here. Item B, public comment, time is provided for anyone wishing to give public comment. Is there anyone in the audience? Is there anyone online who would like to give public comment? I'm seeing nobody. Consent agenda, what is the wish of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
The consent agenda was moved by Council President Valenzuela and seconded by Councilor Marshall. All those in favors, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, hearing none, the consent agenda is approved by the board in a seven to zero vote. Additions and deletions, Executive Director Vander Zanin.
No additions or deletions, thank you, Chair.
Board members, hearing none, moving on. No presentations or resolutions. URA Resolution 2025-02, awarding building improvement grants. I'm gonna turn it over to Brian Poole, our Community Development Director and our Economic Development Coordinator, Miles Glucki.
Thank you, Chair Wenzel. Members of the board, Brian Poole before you on URA Resolution 2025-02. This is the sort of distillation in resolution form of the decided on grants under the Building Improvement Grant Program that is on November 31st, 2024. Staff, is there any questions?
Okay, any questions? I'm gonna go back. Seeing no questions.
Move to approve Resolution 2025-02.
A second.
Hey, your Resolution 2025-02 was moved by Council Schimmel and seconded by Council Martinez. Will the Executive Director please read it by title only?
URA Resolution 2025-02, awarding building improvement grants.
Thank you, discussion? No, no discussion? Okay, since it involves money, we're gonna do a roll call vote.
Director Valenzuela?
Yes.
Director Schimmel?
Yes.
Director Falconer?
Yes.
Director Martinez?
Yes.
Director Marshall?
Yes.
Director Gustafson?
Yes.
Chair Wenzel?
Yes, in a vote of seven to zero, the board has approved URA Resolution 2025-02. Thank you very much. So three minutes in?
Thank you.
Challenge accepted. Okay, we're gonna move on to item F2, modifying the building improvement grant program.
Thank you, Chair Wenzel, members of the board. My apologies, that will take just a few extra seconds this time. This is a reflection of our last work session, and I think we have, again, using the word distilled into Resolution 2025-03, the changes that the board asked for. However, at the end of the work session, there was a little bit of discussion about maybe having a minimum grant award for, for the building improvement grant. There was no sort of, I don't think consensus was reached or anything like that, but staff kind of took that and said, you know, if, if you would like to do that, what staff would recommend is maybe a $5,000 minimum grant award, $10,000 total investment. If you wanted to do that, you would look under, I believe it is Section 2.2 and have a, an amended motion, or sorry, you made the motion to approve and then amend the motion to say that 2.2 should read a building improvement grant matching one-to-one grant. Notes here, of an amount between $5,000 and $100,000 for fitted costs that meet the above purpose. That is, again, if you wish to pursue having a grant. Other than that, is there any questions?
Questions for staff? Council Schimmel, or no?
Well, there's gotta be a motion.
Yeah, but there's no questions about anything, no? No questions, okay. What's the wish of the board?
Move to approve URA Resolution 2025-03.
Second.
It was moved by Councilor Gustafson and seconded by Council President Valenzuela. Will the Executive Director please read it by title only?
There, excuse me, any discussion for this?
We do discussion after the title. You read it by title, we do discussion.
URA Resolution 2025-03, modifying the building improvement grant program.
Thank you, discussion, Council Schimmel.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I want to make a motion to amend the proposed Section 6 scoring rubric to reflect just three additional words. It currently says, project would improve the environmental sustainability of the space. I propose that it say, project would improve the operating, preservation and environmental sustainability of the space. And then the sub-bullet would also include that language, improve the operating, preservation and environmental efficiency of the building, so forth. And the rationale being that, and notably for historic buildings to access funds that to map, to provide matching dollars, the preservation would supersede any environmental to state or any environmental provision to it. So to me, it's, it's a, it's a both and or one of those provisions based on the, the type of building being improved and whether you're using some matching funds, such as say a Main Street grant, where, where you're obligated to the Interior Secretary's preservation standards, which speak to historic preservation. The other factor too, especially with these much older buildings along Main Street, for example, you're talking about structural and seismic integrity of the building. So your, your ability to operate and preserve needs to be as much of a priority as, and where there is an opportunity to use environmental materials, that's great. But where there's, there's, on historic buildings, there's so much obligation to preserving like material. I think that needs to be reflected in there, so that historic buildings aren't penalized for not meeting a major criteria.
Can I try to paraphrase what you just said? You're basically just saying, hey, we want to add, improve the operating, preservation and environmental. Yeah, operating, preservation and environmental. Okay, is there a second on that? A second. Okay, so it was moved by Council, Council Schimmel, this is just on the amendment, folks. It was moved by Council Schimmel and seconded by Council Falconer. So the amendment would just add three words to say like, hey, like it's gonna do this and that.
Operating, preservation and.
Preservation and environmental, so it's a compound. Can I ask a question? Does it, so it has to do both in order for the scoring rubric?
Well, good question, it could, it could say and/or environmental.
I would prefer like and/or, sorry, just because like what it, it just gives the score like a little bit more flexibility. Because it's like, you know, sometimes I'm kind of like a black and white score. I'm like, well, if it doesn't do both on the application.
I accept.
And he accepts my amendment. Can I even make an amendment as the mayor? I thought I couldn't do anything.
If the maker of the motion accepts your friendly amendment, then you don't have to change the original motion.
But can I even do?
So their friendly, the friendly addition is and/or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we tried to capture the amendment up on the board there, or on your computer screens, if you can see it. And it would be Section 6, the last scoring rubric, and it would read, the addition would be operating, preservation and/or would be the new language.
Okay, and just for future endeavors? I mean, I don't know, but I don't want to speak for the rest of the council, but I am 45 years old. That color font is very hard to read. Okay, I'm just letting you know, like, can we zoom into like 20 font, a different color, like gift.
Okay, there we go, there we go.
Policy.
Jeez Louise, sorry, but was anyone else thinking that?
Someone who's also 45, I'm, I'm starting to like get that sense of like, you're starting to use that when you're saying you're old, and that really bothers me for some reason, although I agree.
Well, I'm not old, I just can't see, and my hair is like going down. Okay, cool, so any more discussion on the amendment? Okay, all those in favors of the amend, the three-worded, maybe now four-worded amendment? Say aye, sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, hearing none. The amendment has been approved with a seven to zero vote. So now, is there any additional discussion on Resolution 2025-03? Anybody? Okay, hearing none, yes, there's Jesse.
Sorry. Staff wanted to see if council maybe wanted to make a minimum amount for, for participating in the program. At the, if the board doesn't want to entertain that, that's fine. But if the board did want to entertain that, we at least wanted to bring that to the board's attention. It was not talked about at the last work session, but it did come up after the work session. So we thought we'd just raise that issue.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess for me, like, I'm like, oh, that's not a very large amount, like in one of our requests. But also, I have to, you know, constantly self-reflect, and it's not my job. Like, that could be enough for someone to get a project done, and it could help. So it's early in this program, and I don't feel comfortable saying like, hey, if you're not gonna spend like a good chunk of change, we're not gonna match you. Like, I would just like, that's just me, if that was my one person.
I'd, I'd want to go a step further and like give our department an allowance on application, like, like the 250 something last, I mean, that was a same.
You want to give Miles 250?
Yeah, I want to give Miles an allowance.
I'll just go up there.
So, I mean, we'd have to now, but that's just where I would go, is, is to give some allowance to let these, let these things just happen.
I would really worry about that becoming an issue. I mean, I mean, I'm sure we would hear about it in advance, but if we were to make that part of the program, we could be in, in trouble, because our URA, it's, it's a big area. It's really big, it's surprisingly big to me. And it includes a lot more geography than I think a lot of people realize. And if there was a minimum, we could easily, like, all of a sudden, be doling out like thousands of little 250s. And I don't know that that's a really great use of either. Like, that concerns me that we would deplete it accidentally on a bunch of small.
Okay, so we're gonna move on from this discussion that Jesse brought up. And, okay, um, we, we didn't, did we already vote? No, we just did the, okay, all those in favor of URA Resolution 2025-03, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please, same sign, nope. Okay, 2025-03 has been approved by the URA Board in a vote of seven to zero. And our last URA Resolution is appointing the auditor. We already had the staff report, so I'm not gonna call Paul back up here. Are there any questions that we have with staff? I feel like Jesse can answer them. Are there any questions? Seeing no questions, what's the wish of the board?
Thank you.
Move to ass.
Okay, Council, okay, Council Martinez moved and Council Gustafson seconded on Resolution, U, or URA Resolution 2025-04. Can the Executive Director read it by title only?
URA Resolution 2025-04, appointing the URA auditor for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025 through the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2027.
Okay, discussion, seeing none, will the city recorder please call or roll? It's just our auditor, we don't, we only hire a few people, so.
Director Schimmel?
Yes.
Director Falconer?
Yes.
Director Martinez?
Yes.
Director Marshall?
Yes.
Director Gustafson?
Yes.
Director Valenzuela?
Yes.
Chair Wenzel?
Yes, URA Resolution 2025-04 is approved by the Board of Directors in a seven to zero vote. And I adjourn this meeting of the URA. Only eight minutes late, friends.
Good job, good job.
Good job, everybody.